We'll now call this regular meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. Welcome all those that are in attendance tonight, and also everyone watching the meeting on G10 television. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Logan Sosa, followed by invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we pause and give you thanks. Give you thanks for this beautiful day, for the privilege of living here in the city of Jacksonville, and of working together for the benefit of our city and its citizens. Teach us, heavenly Father, that what we are is your gift to us, and what we become is our gift back to you. May each of us strive to work together to benefit our city and its citizens, and always be in service to others. We pray for our military, who are serving here and around the world, many in harm's way. Keep them safe, and bless their anxious families. And as always, give your guidance and direction to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. All right, councilor, this time you received a copy of the agenda. We're going to move things around a little bit tonight, as far as the way, the order of business here. We'll move the reports into one city moment after number 12, and we will go to A and B for FY '24 budget discussion. So with that being the only change, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
No motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, sign if I will say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have our first section of public comment for the evening. All right, so we're going to hold to the rules, the three-minute rule. That means you get three minutes. I will have, not to be rude or anything, but I'll have to cut you off at three minutes. At that point, you need to finish up. So we're using, which mic do you want?
One side of the clock.
Okay, all right. So when you come up, come to this podium here. And when you do come up, please state your name and address for the clerk. And I'll begin with Justin Haber.
With a wash place, with a co-wash on Don't Ranch Road, crossing to Williamsburg, crossing shopping center, even though there's a red light, the stop sign to walk, it remains on don't walk. It does not change to walk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can we check on that, please? Michael?
My name's Michael Nereski, 201, Pigeon Lane. I actually live in Swansboro, North Carolina. I'm the Executive Director of You Empower You. I'm an advocate for the people of Jacksonville and the community that we serve. I'm also the chairperson for the Jacksonville Onslow Welcome Home Council. I wish to advise you of some things that just happened that were pretty interesting and pretty beautiful. First of all, I'd like to thank councilperson Cindy Everett, councilperson Bob Warden, and councilperson Brian Jackson for coming to the first reentry simulation that ever took place in a state east of Raleigh. It took place last Thursday at the Crystal Coast Convention Center in Carteret in collaboration with Carteret County. The state has stated that it is an amazing success. A lot of people found out how difficult it is for individuals coming home. Even some people in this room were arrested that day for not getting their probation done in time. But more importantly, I'm here to tell you about something that Councilman Jackson and I, when we went to the state's convention about a week ago, the conference up in Charlotte, we had the opportunity to speak with the new Secretary of the Department of Adult Corrections. We had the opportunity to speak to the Undersecretary George Pettigrew, and also the Governor of the State of North Carolina. In that, we found a lot of information, but more importantly, we found information that no one knew about. And I'm here to tell you that information today. Some people already know this. We notified probation of this today. We notified other public officials, and I wanted to make it to the open tonight. We have found through Obamacare that was revitalized and reworked, that there's a program called the GIFT program. And that GIFT program is health insurance. And we have confirmed, and we have the documentations and the applications that are going to probation starting tomorrow, which has approximately 1,000 people that don't have health insurance, that they're going to be able to get free health insurance and their families for not one year, but for as long as Obamacare is around. That also means for anyone that's currently on probation, 1,400 probation told us there are, 80% don't have health insurance and their families. They now will have insurance over the next couple of months as we go through the process, the Jacksonville Onslow Welcome Home Council and You Empower You getting their applications done. That's also applicable to the county. Because that building that's down the street here, the county lockup, those individuals there, too, are Title II insurance. This is a major blow and a major undertaking that we're about to take on, but more importantly, it's a really nice day to know now individuals that don't have health insurance are going to be able to get it. And that includes major medical, mental health, prescriptions, primary care physicians. And on top of all this, the provider behind us, they get a card from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. That's what Jacksonville Onslow Welcome Home Council is doing for the people in the community of this city of Jacksonville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cheers. Is that correct?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Gloria Goodwin, and I have a question. I see it's on your agenda for non-consent, but because I came down, I want to ask it anyway. According to city policy and procedure, what is the appointment process for Mr. Ernie Wright's faith and see on the Tourism and Development Advisory Board? When will the appointment occur? And finally, who is eligible for the appointment?
Mayor, we'll go through all of that when that agenda item comes up at number eight, but we'll go exactly through what the requirements are for the TDA. So many have to be hoteliers, so many have to be involved in the hotel, not hotel, but promotions, et cetera. So we'll go through all that when we get to that moment in time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy Buckman?
Hello, I'm Marcy Buckman, Community Transformation Specialist at the Newtown Center Apartments. Good evening, mayor and council members. From the last meeting, we currently have 15 residents left out of the 69 that we had at Town Center. It has been a little messy transition for everyone. It's not the way that we wanted things to go, but we have supplied the residents with numerous resources and accommodated them with extensions to help ensure that they maintained housing. We are looking forward to supplying housing for the community of Jacksonville. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor, Josh, John. My name is Justin Inquist, as Community Investment Group there at Newtown Center, and I'm the Community Construction Officer with CIG. I'm just here to give an update on the progress at Newtown Center, as we have been working tirelessly to transform this neglected community, investing millions of dollars and our personal time to be able to provide a place for families to call home. As far as progress to date, I'm happy to announce we have 10 new remodeled units with COs. We have approximately 60 more units permitted that are currently under construction in various stages of construction. We are actively working through the PUD zoning process with the city to adjust the new UDO requirements for the Newtown Center to be attainable with an existing property that's been here since the 50s. We're still battling to not have to conform Newtown Center to something that's not, to not have to rebuild Newtown Center according to codes designed for new developments and construction that are irrelevant to this property, and counterintuitive to accomplishing our objectives, which is to help solve the housing crisis in Jacksonville, and like we like to call it, put heads in beds. With that being said, I did want to bring up a couple of things we've been dealing with. Unfortunately, we still find ourselves getting blindsided at times by certain building officials who even at this time are holding units hostage that are so close to being completed, that have already passed inspection, that we have pre-leased with people waiting to move in, but are not allowing us to get power turned on. And it seems as if they're trying to use it as leverage to force us to perform unneeded work that is contrary to our professional opinion, our contractors, our licensed electricians, and even Duke Energy. I'm amazed how much we continue to experience certain city officials speaking out of both sides of their mouth, that they say they want to work with us, and then when we seem like we're getting momentum, they turn around when we least expect it, and at usual, it's critical junctures of the project, issue unreasonable demands or unreasonable to deal with. And it just seems like there's some kind of agenda or something there that's just confusing to us. You know, just to remind you, we are ultimately here to work together to deliver clean, safe, and affordable housing by renovating these existing units at Newtown Center, and not build something new or perform repairs that are based off someone's personal opinion, someone's personal preference or biases. You know, we want to strictly do it to the code, what we need to do, what we have to do, what the code states. We want it to be safe, clean, and affordable. We just want it to make sense. You know, we don't want to waste our funds and do things that are just something that has to be done because it's done somewhere else. I'm asking tonight, city council members, city attorney, city manager, zoning and building officials, to please put any personal biases, agendas aside, support us with common sense solutions, help cut the red tape to help overcome these self-imposed obstacles that, for the most part, were, you know, brought on by the city before, and please just help us deliver these units, those 700 Newtown Center housing units, the quickest way possible, and look forward to celebrating together the transformation of this amazing community.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmen and women. I've been working with CIG for about two years, and I'm an acquisition manager over there, and I'd actually tracked the Town Center with the prior ownership of the property. When I first met Brad and the CIG team, it was over at a property in Newport News, similar reputation. Even worse, in fact, that when I was going to visit Brad, my colleague told me, and I quote, "Make sure you put on a bulletproof vest." When I got to the property, it was, I was very surprised. The property did not show anything like what my colleagues had told me. The units had been completely renovated. The residents, which were talked about very negatively from our brokerage firm, were engaged and seemed to be thriving with the existing management. At the time, I'd been working with the prior ownership of the Newtown Center, understanding what was going on, and they had about as many negative things to say about the city council as everyone can say about them and their ownership of that property. But that's why we're here, is to say, we're all here to approach the same goal, which is to provide the adequate and safe housing for about 1,800 residents which can go into the Town Center Apartments. I'm not, while I'm not a track guy, the, I've been told the hardest race and track is the 800-meter hurdle, as you are sprinting the entire way, and every hurdle is an intention to slow you down. The way I look at it is this is a 694-meter hurdle, and so the less hurdles that we can have to go over, the faster we can expedite this process to provide safe and affordable housing to the residents. Lastly, I know you've heard a lot from the residents from the past, present, as well as a lot from the CIG and KEV Prop team. Take time to stop by the property yourself. Our team would happily show you the units, the good, the bad, the ugly. You can see it from top to bottom, so you can have a firsthand opinion for yourself, so you don't have to rely on other people. And you can see the transformation that's going on there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Sutherland, and I was here a couple months ago, and I shared with you a little bit about my role at CIG. I am the Community Connections Officer, and so community relationships is basically what I do. And so what I wanted to share with you this evening is about a specific relationship that we carry to each property and something that you can expect to see in Newtown Center. So one of our community partnerships that we work with on every property is called Apartment Life. And basically, what they do is they, we get a picture of what the property is and who lives there, and we, we come and they place a team to live on site. And what they do then is they're kind of like an RA of a college, you know? They're kind of making sure everybody, you know, new residents are welcomed, residents who are up for renewal are checked on to make sure that they're happy and that they're, you know, receiving or living the way that they'd like to live, that they, their apartments are taken care of, those types of things. And so they're also responsible for the community aspect. And so what that entails for them is they are responsible for three community events a month, and then they are also responsible, like I said, for welcoming new residents and renewal visits. And then they are also responsible for something they call cares, which is just basically being a good neighbor. So if you've had a good neighbor before, you know that it's comforting to know that you have people around you that you trust, people that you can talk to, people that, you know, care about you, basically just because you live close by. And so your community is what you have in common. And so, for example, if somebody's mother passed, they might bring them some flowers or things. Those things would fall under care. But what's really amazing about it is that these people feel called to do this intentionally, right? So they're looking for the opportunities. So that's, that is one of the partners, like I said, that we, we work with on each of our properties. Now, for Jacksonville, Apartment Life did tell me that they thought two teams, because of the size, two teams would be a good fit, but we have decided to go under contract for three teams just because of the size. It doesn't, it's not something that happens overnight. They really try to look for a good, a good, solid team, and then we'll roll it out from there. So that is just something that you can expect, and that even though, you know, we've had some hurdles, like Dutch had said, we are still moving forward in our community plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Sutherland?
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. Mr. Carter, Mr. Ray over there, thank you for having me up here today. My name is Steven Sutherland, I live at 900 Barcelona Court, Chesapeake, Virginia. I'm up here today to talk to you about water again. I know you guys are probably getting tired of me coming to you every time and discussing the water, but it's a very expensive utility for us at Town Center, and we're continuing to be charged and pay for thousands of gallons of water that we're not using each month. So I presented two months ago, actually it was three months ago, we went into closed-door session. I was told that if we could cap off the units that we weren't using, that we wouldn't have to pay for those. And on my way home, I came up with a much more cost-effective idea, and I said, you know, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Ray, I'd like to talk with you about that. It went about three or four weeks before Mr. Ray got back to me and said, you know, what do you got? And I presented to all of you what my, you know, my plan was, was to put this cap on that could be locked out, tag out, much more inexpensive than, than actually having a plumber come in there. But we've been talking about this and talking about this, and, you know, where we felt that we were owed $165,000 in credits for all the thousands of gallons of water that we did not use in the sewage that wasn't going out, the opposite side that we were being charged with, the bill has continued to grow. So where you said it was $60,000 back in February, now it's up to $146,000, where my math took me from 165 to 145, so we've kind of evened up. We haven't come across anything yet to come up to a conclusion on how we're going to fix this water issue out there. First, it was, you know, that's not going to satisfy our bonds and covenants. And then it was like, well, we need a map of the property. Well, now that we found the map of the property, now we've been given this, hey, this will wipe out this, but you have to sign this MOU, which we're not going to sign because it basically gives up all of our rights to our property. So now water is being held hostage to our new move-ins. So it's not a fair situation here, because this hasn't been given the attention that it's been needed since January, since we first brought this up. And so now we're at the point now, where we're still getting charged this exuberant cost every single month for water that we're not using. Now it's going to go down now because we've moved residents out. But at the same point in time, the credits should still be going up, and the bill should be coming down, and it's not. So I'm asking you today, we asked for it to be put on the agenda for two months ago to have this voted on. It was denied, and the juice is still burning, and our bill is still continuing to go up and go up every month. So I need your help on this. I need it, I need it yesterday. I need it three months ago, not three weeks from now or two months from now. I don't want to be standing up here. I'd like not to be standing up here a month from now, having to discuss with you, how I'm here today to discuss the water bill again at Town Center. But they do like my idea of the lock and tag out, so that has been approved moving forward, but we got to get this bill taken care of. So behind your closed-door meetings, if you could bring that up. Thank you for your time.
Yes, good evening, mayor, city council, Mr. Carter, Mr. Ray, other members of the city. So good to be back down here again. As we've come back down today, we always try to have productive meetings prior to coming in, and we were dealing with a lot of construction issues today, and it's just always a lot going on. Been down here so many times, and we've discussed so many things. I guess my short and brief statements today is that even though, as Steve just mentioned, there's some big things, some big items that have to be dealt with, and we're working on that, sometimes not to the numbers and not in the direction that Steve was anticipating. Sometimes we expect things to be going down, and then we find out they've gone up. That's very, very disappointing. But the essence of what I guess I've heard in our meetings today, two or three hours, and some of the reports tonight, and with you all still here listening to us, and us driving down three and a half hours consistently, is that we're making progress, even though it does, it does not or may not feel like it or look like it. We're going to continue, as Brad has challenged us and encouraged us and is our foundation. We're not going anywhere. You'll hear that again, over and over and over again. The project's going to be completed, and we're making progress. So thank you for the progress that we're making, large or small. I do believe that you're going to see us, I know that you're going to see and hear from us more plans for solution. We're going to continue to be solution-oriented until solution comes, and then we're going to deliver a phenomenal product for you, a phenomenal community, just because, as I think we heard Justin or someone say before, there may be certain requirements that are being placed on us from a construction standpoint that do not apply to this particular type of projects, not new construction. However, that doesn't mean that we don't have the ability to deliver a product that looks better than new construction, that has more quality. Some of the old stuff, as some of you may know, in terms of construction, old stuff is built better than new stuff anyway. And with the quality that we require, that Brad Newton requires of us with his background in real estate as well as mine, we go into old structures, and we put in the absolute best. We don't go in to put something in cheap. We just had a conversation with our construction team about that a few minutes ago. We don't go in to put in the cheapest thing, because we want our properties and our communities to last long term, and to have the least amount of maintenance, which is less cost for us as operators, so that we can maintain efficiencies. So I want to say thank you, and look forward to us bringing to you more opportunities for solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Arnold Rogers?
Good evening, mayor, council members. I've been really waiting to ask you guys this question. For a couple months, I've watched a couple proceedings. I really, really want to stand an invitation for all you to come out to the property and see the progress. I'm the maintenance supervisor there. I've been there since July of last year. I moved to Atlanta just for this project, and so I've watched it from beginning to the point we are now. So I hear a lot of the politics in play with all of this right here, so I personally just came here to ask one thing for you guys to come out there. Let me give you a tour of the property and what we've done so far, so that you can kind of help when you go in the office and help us figure this out. That's it.
Thank you. Bradley Newton?
Good evening, mayor, council, and Mr. Carter and Josh Ray. Thank y'all for having us again. I usually don't prepare some things, but I just wanted to prepare a few. I get excited when I get up here. But just first, I want to say I'm very thankful for my team. You know, some of these team members drive a long way to be here, and some of them, I don't even know they're coming, like the gentleman last time that spoke, and Dutch this time. And it just takes such a team to do a project like this. This is, as we all know, a 20-some million dollar investment just in the renovation, and 16, over 16 million we paid for the property. But this is, they mention my name a lot, but this is far from an individual sport. This is definitely a team sport. And I am very happy to report that, you know, God delivered this land, this property to us, I believe. It was tempted to be purchased by a lot bigger companies than us, and owned by a lot bigger companies than us, but I just am very thankful he's made this a shepherd of it, and that we've delivered, you know, a team that can actually get this done, and they're getting it done. And I know they've done a lot of invites for all of you to come down there, so I do really encourage, I'll meet you anytime. Many of you have my cell phone, or I can provide it, and you, I'd be glad to help with that tour in any way that I can, and just keep an open dialogue. So thank you for the dialogue that is coming. We're just excited to continue to work together. You know, we're going to deliver a record number of units in the coming weeks for new move-ins that are going on, and the people are, you know, it's life-changing, whether they moved from Guatemala, or whether they're in the military, or whether they're a single mom, or as we saw, the first people that moved in were actually ones that left when they were told to leave years ago and moved back in. So we're very thankful for the people that have moved in. With all that being said, we just, as the analogy gave of the race, we just really ask that we can keep that conversation going to be able to reduce the hurdles to doing so. We'll be up on our anniversary, I don't know if many of you know this, but our anniversary might have been a good sign. Friday, the 13th of last year, is when we closed on Newtown Center Apartments. It was a scary deal in many ways, when nine other companies, I think one of the prior city managers said, tried to buy it and weren't able to get funding and weren't able to close. But the great news here, we'll be here for the time going forward, because we're all in on the project, and we have no other plan. And I think we all know that that's a great plan for the transformation that's over there. There's a lot of different things that go on at this project, and there's a lot of different codes and this and that. I would just encourage all of you to look deep, and when you lay your head to rest at night, look at what any of that, as I so famously quote the mayor saying, "The book this big," that we could argue whether it applies or not, what that really has to do with a Mrs. Jones moving into a safe, clean apartment that we've invested $30,000 or more in. We'd love to be able to continue to do that and have your help to accelerate that. Thank you for your time tonight. Have a blessed evening.
We have minutes from April 4, 2023, special meeting, April 4, 2023 workshop meeting, and seven consent items. and seven consent items. And entertain a motion at this time to adopt the minutes and approve the consent items.
Move for the adoption of the minutes and the consent items.
Second.
Any discussion? Here, none, all in favor, signify if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right. Go to number eight on, on your agenda for tonight. This is a Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority appointment. And this is the position that was held by Mr. Ernie Wright, who served very dedicatedly to this, to the purpose of this committee. So this time, I think, open for nominations.
Yes, sir. I was going to say, do we want to, do we want to explain that the lady did ask some questions? I think we are an explanation.
Your agenda item has the explanation in it and that is what the state law says is
what it also is what your 2010-15, so 13 years we've had the TDA now that requires. And the statute is very specific. One-third of the members shall be individuals who are affiliated with businesses that collect the tax, the hoteliers. And we have two hoteliers on there, so that box is checked. And then at least one-half of the members shall be individuals who are currently active in the promotion of travel and tourism in the city. That is where Mr. Wright was one of those. Mr. Wright was involved in Jazz in the City. He actually recused himself and that agenda item came up to fund that in the past. So again, th- those are the two categories. I don't think, and I'm looking at the agenda item, Mr. Jackson certainly checks that box. He checks that box in a couple of ways. He is on the mayor's committee for the recreation land, the subcommittee that's working, and presently he's also on the recreation committee. So from that angle, he clearly would check that second box and we, we don't need any more hoteliers because we have that completely full at this point in time. But it's so totally up to council for you, Mayor. Now, ask me questions or to take nominations.
Mr. Carter.
Yes, ma'am.
Quick question for you. So with this particular appointment, does this currently, who is our chairman for the TDA?
Mr. Randy Thomas is your chairman.
Previous council member?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And currently, how many council members do we have serving on the TDA?
Presently, I only have one, that's Mr. Warden.
Okay.
Let me go over the membership. You have Chris Davis, who is a hotelier. Mr. Young, who is a hotelier, Rick Young is his name, I'm sorry. Ken Hagan, former city manager, former recreation director is a member, Mr. Warden. And then the, the fifth member is, help me, Mr. Warden.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry. Yeah, the chairman is the fifth member. So the only vacancies, the sixth member of the board, the only vacancy is to fill Mr. Wright. And, you know, I'm glad that this is brought up, whoever you appoint, because this has caused to have give notice, as Mr. Warden knows, when his group, I think it's your group or one of the groups, we have subcommittees and the one that Mr. Wright was on, there's no problem because there's just two members, we don't have to give public notice. But the one Mr. Thomas is on, which is the promotions committee, Mr. Wright, Mr. Warden and Mr. Hagan were on the subcommittee for capital, I call it, but it's another term that's like tourism related. They don't have to give public notice, but for the other one, when they have a subcommittee, we have to actually give public notice because there's a quorum there with three of the five being a quorum. With this, whoever you fill this vacancy with, there would, would not have that requirement anymore because the subcommittees couldn't, couldn't leave without that notification. Other question?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And my last question, some committees, I know we have quite a few council members. So is this a particular committee in which, since we already have one council member serving, would it be in opposition to appoint another? I'm just asking for clarification. Because most of our advisory councils committees is for the public at large to be involved. So I just want clarification, are, is this a particular committee in which we have to have more than one council member? Or could it be viewed that if we have one council member already serving, to appoint another? And this has nothing to do with you, I'm, I'm just asking clarification. Would it be taking the seat from another citizen that would want to seek appointment to this board as well? Because I wouldn't want the public to think that council is pretty much stacking the deck on these various different committees with more than one council member when these advisory committees are supposed to be at the service of the people and to have citizens a part of these committees? Do you understand? Okay.
The primary question is, is there a problem with Mr. Jackson accepting the nomination if he's nominated? The answer is no.
Okay.
And this is the reason behind that. The TDA, all members are appointed by council. The TDA has money that they are going to be working with money theoretically from the council in working toward development of the 400-acre tract of land that was bought for recreational purposes. So the more in sync, cross pollination may be a term, that, that you can have on those two boards, I think benefits that whole process of those 400 acres going forward. But I find no, no problem with Mr. Jackson being appointed to this. Thank you.
I think that's a fair explanation, please. So again, I'll say nominations.
Mayor and Council, I move that Councilmember Brian Jackson be appointed to the Tourism and Development Authority.
Second.
Is there any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed and the candidate elected by acclamation.
All is in favor, signify if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you for offering the serve. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity. But when I think about Attorney Wright, I think about a giant in so many different ways, the length of time he's been here and all the service he's given to this community. So nowhere in this world can I even carry a shoe, more or less even try to fill it.
At least try.
Yeah. I'm going to try. But thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, moving on to, lost track of myself here.
Ordinance amendment for Jacksonville Transit.
Yes. We have an ordinance amendment for Jacksonville. For budgeted positions for Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority. Anthony is going to provide us with the information on this. Go ahead, Anthony.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Several weeks ago, we talked about what the TDA is working on and all the great things that we support, the events and, and tourism in general. But what we also talked about is what we hope to do in the year ahead. One of those big initiatives is what we refer to as military reunions. This is a business that we were in in 2016, all the way up to the point where basically COVID caused it to fall apart, of course, because nobody was traveling. At the time, we had a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to, to host these events and to do all the coordination, but unfortunately, that's not going to work out moving forward. The good news here is, is that there's still the opportunity. So I showed this slide to you just a few weeks ago, showing what the economic impact could be. And then I also showed this slide to the TDA a few weeks, talking about what the return on investment might be if we start pursuing these more aggressively. So you can see on the low and the high range, that's a pretty consistent, considerable impact for the community. So the reason that I bring that up is because at that meeting, I mentioned to you that it's likely that we would need additional staff member to make this happen. And in fact, the TDA voted on the 30th of March to program the funding in order for us to hire, but in fact, that employee, if they were hired, would become a city employee. The TDA is not in the business of actually being an employer. So what we hope to do with that individual is pursue the military reunion program, to work on research data, learning about our market, making better decisions so that we're creating more tourism productivity, work with our hospitality partners, like Mr. Carter mentioned before, Mr. Young and Mr. Davis and all the other ones out there. But most importantly in my mind, provide administrative support to the board. So for 13 years, it's been a part-time job for a lot of folks throughout the organization. And we love the job and certainly appreciate the mission. But as we continue forward with all the momentum that we're gaining, we really need that full-time support. So the request before you tonight is to consider amending the current budget ordinance to add a full-time benefited position for the Tourism Development Authority. The funding for current fiscal year is in place and ready to go. And the draft budget that the TDA will consider for adoption in May also includes funding for next year. We do anticipate that this will be a reoccurring investment that we will have for the foreseeable future. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the request.
And that total cost will come out of the TDA's budget?
Yes, sir. This, the total cost of the person will be funded by occupancy tax. And then, of course, if you look back here, it's an investment that we hope will continue paying for itself over time.
Who would this person report to?
Technically, it would be to the staff liaison to the Tourism Development Authority. Currently, I am that liaison, but that's up to the city manager to determine.
And who would hire?
As far as who would make the hiring decision? So there would be a panel of probably four of us that'd help make that decision, but ultimately that individual would report to me.
And who is the four?
Excuse me?
Who is the four individuals that will be hiring?
That is yet to be determined. We would base that panel on the policy, the hiring and recruitment policy that we have.
Okay. Who's going to write the job description?
The job description has been written and it's based upon a variety of, of other ones that we pulled across the state.
Have you submitted that to council for review?
Typically, that does not go to council. That goes to the Human Resources Department and then is approved by the city manager.
Okay. But it's part of the budget, correct?
It is currently part of the 23 budget and is intended to be part of the 24 budget.
And what is the salary range?
That is yet to be determined. It depends on which, so there's a tiered approach to how we might make the hire. Generally speaking, it's probably going to be around $40,000, $40,000, $45,000.
And can you go back to that, the description where it listed the coordinator's position? So from what I'm looking, you're, are you specifically looking for someone to work with the military reunion program specifically or?
That would be a lion's share of their responsibility, yes. But then there are a lot of other odds and ends that we need them to help pick up and that falls under the administrative support. So what I call keeping the balls in the air on a daily basis, again, we draw folks from transportation, including myself, from finance, from media, from, from recreation, a number of different departments, but this individual would be specifically for that purpose, to make sure that all the initiatives are moving forward the way they should.
Let me ask you this, Anthony. Now, this, this would take away the response, any responsibilities of staff, current staff, the way organizations configured, have to deal with.
It wouldn't take it away in total. It would certainly reduce. Because what we're intending to do here is, again, pick up another programmatic initiative, which is the military reunion program.
And I'm sorry, you said funding would come from the TDA?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Benefits and everything would be coming from that budget, but it would be a city employee?
That's the way that it works mechanically, yes, because the TDA is not going to hire an employee themselves. It basically works like our MPO positions do, where technically there's a transportation advisory committee that makes a lot of the decisions related to what they do, but they're city employees that are funded through our pay program and paid for by federal funds. So it's the same concept that we have over there with those positions. It's just occupancy tax revenue, still a city employee falling under the, the chain of command.
And will any of our city employees be allowed to apply for this position?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's going to be open posted, just like any other job that, that we would hire for, available to both internal and external candidates.
They would still be subject to all this city's personnel policies and procedures?
They would be a city employee.
And who would do the evaluation of this employee?
That would be me. Unless the city manager chooses to change the staff liaison.
Dr. Washington will get you and the whole council a copy of the job description. So if you have anyone who might be interested, if you do approve this, then we'll make sure you have that description.
I think it's a great opportunity considering that this is a military town. It has a lot that can be offered. So hopefully others will be encouraged to apply.
I'm sure there will be a lot of interest. This is going to be a really great position. And in fact, one of the things that I was working on earlier today is a military reunion that's going to have over 300 people involved in it. And so we're talking about probably around 500 to 600 hotel nights, depending on how long those folks stay. And so use the multiplier there. I mean, that's, that's where we're headed as far as an economic impact. We just need the resources to do that effectively.
I remember when this program was kicked off prior to COVID and the momentum with which it accelerated in it. It is a full-time job, just running the reunion program alone. So I have no qualms with that being a lion's share of the job because it's a lion-sized job. I've seen it in action. But it, it is a very beneficial, high return for the investment. It will do our community a lot of good. We will see hotel room nights, we will see restaurant revenues, we will see other things being visited. These groups, when they come to the area, tend to come for a, you know, not a one-night stay, but they'll come for a multiple night stay and they're looking for other things to do in the area. So it will provide us both, you know, some tourism revenues outside of the hotel dollars as well. And we'll see, you know, particularly businesses that are in entertainment and/or, you know, cultural things to do. There's going to be some blossoming of those things, I think, with this opportunity because when you have 300, 400, 500 people coming to town at a time looking for things to do, it helps sustain efforts to give them things to do. So I think it'll be a win-win. And we'll, we'll see return, we'll see return in dollars, but we'll see return in growth as well.
One of the things too, that we're really trying to emphasize is, you know, patronizing local businesses while they're here. So you can see on the screen, there's a list of, of, of local restaurants. This is just the restaurants. We have another list for services and so on and so forth, but the deals that they're offer to incentivize folks to go out and eat and do things while they're there and of course, pay city taxes while they're doing so. You know, that's, that's a big part of this and we want it to have an economic impact as, as wide as we can spread it.
Any other, any other questions, Anthony?
Anthony?
Sir?
I guess the person in this position would also be a liaison to the base as well, correct? Because I'm sure, like, when you get military, or form of military.
You know, I've never, you know, I've never really thought about that, but there is certainly a connection there. And, and we do work with the base on a lot of things because if you think about it, they are the primary reason that folks are coming here for, you know, from a tourism perspective. So yes, there will certainly be a connection. I'm not sure I would call them a liaison, so to speak, but there will be a working relationship there on a regular basis.
We just report, appointed Joe Ramirez from out at Camp Lejeune on the civic affairs as a representation.
That's great. We work with Joe on this type of stuff all the time.
I'm kind of partial to veteran service organizations. We used to go around, do a lot of trainings around the country too, so that might be a consideration as well.
Sounds good. The other thing too is, don't forget about the veterans events that we're putting on here, particularly the, the veterans. We can't call it weekend anymore because it's more than one weekend, but that is a cornerstone of what we're trying to accomplish and having additional capacity just allows us to make that even better.
Great. Other questions? You're being asked to consider this ordinance amendment.
Move the, for adoption of the ordinance amendment to create a position of tourism coordinator for the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here, none, all in favor, signify if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony. All right. So next we go to number 10. And this is the Carolina State Side Development Request to amend the purchase agreement as to a family affordability. Request to amend the purchase agreement as to family affordable housing units, and Mr. Carter will present.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to give you some background information. I want to make it clear, I'm not here to advocate one way or the other in reference to the request. Mr. McCloskey will do that in a moment, but I do think it's very important for council. Ms. Edwards was not even here when this particular decision to make an agreement to purchase this land for the affordable housing in the Commons was even made, and I think it's really important that you know your history, council, or previous councils have made in reference to affordable housing. So let me begin by asking you to look toward the first page of the agenda item, agenda item number 10. And down at the bottom are the requests from Carolina Statewide Development. The first request is to reduce from 72 affordable units to 64 units on a 6.4 acre tract of land, and all of these requests are in reference to this 6.4 acre tract of land. And if you wanted to do that, you would approve Resolution A. The second request is that the council donate that 6.4 acre tract of land, which would equal a gift of about $576,000, and I'll tell you why that's a plus or minus here in a moment, and that is Resolution B. And then the third request is to grant a $1,002,000 loan for a 20-year term to the purchaser to assist with the project, and that, of course, could be added to any motion that is made. The council has never, in the last 25 years, made a sale or a donation of real estate for affordable housing, but the council has made multiple low-interest loans available to at least one and actually two members of the community. In front of you, you have, or on the screen, it's called Affordable Housing Loan History. All of these, except one, which I believe, hold on a minute, let me get my notes. All of these loans were made to Mr. Keith Walker, who developed everything on this page except Huntington Place. Huntington Place was developed by a gentleman named Mr. Craig Stone, Winfield Properties. All of these monies, except for the $250,000 at the top, all of these monies came from CBDG money. So the allocation that came to the city from the federal government, that was loaned out in these increments. This agenda item is connected to the next agenda item, because it's connected to the next agenda item, so I'm going to be referring to those in a moment, so bear with me if I lose you. Tell me to get back on course. The $250,000 at the top of there was actually from the North Carolina Housing Finance Association, but that money was given to the city to administer, and unlike most of the situations where that money goes back to the North Carolina Housing Finance Association or other entities, that money comes back to us and is actually used in our programs here. And Ms. Tracy Jackson has worked with me tremendously on this, and she, if I can't answer, can't answer these questions, but I wanted to point this out to you, that the council over the last, since 2005 through yesterday, because you're getting ready to take some other action here in a moment, you may not even know you went ready to take, has loaned out 1.4, nearly $1.5 million, and all that's been paid back except $431,000. Okay? The reason I say these agenda items are connected, number 12 is an agenda item where Ms. Jackson will get up here, and she will talk to you about the action plan that she has. One component of that action plan is a low-interest loan, again, to Mr. Keith Walker, who is developing another affordable housing complex over here off Carolina Forest. That amount, as I understand it, is for $120,000. Mr. Walker has gone through the process, and that's in the plan, and if you approve her plan, that loan will be made to Mr. Walker, such as all these loans have been made in the past. You are authorized by North Carolina General Statute 168-279 to convey property by private sale to nonprofit entities for the construction of low or moderate income housing. That's what happened here on October 5th, 2021. I think it's important to think back on that date. Most of you were here, but on that date, we were in the midst of COVID. We wore masks into the council chambers. Additionally, if you recall, on that day, Town Center was at the front and foremost of, just as it is tonight, but in another way. At that time, council was working on a resolution, if you recall, to make sure that residents were removed from that complex because of unsanitary and unsafe housing. That was what you had on your plate at that time. But at that time, Carolina statewide came forward and made a proposal, and this was approved by you that night, and let me walk through it just quickly. That on the ele... Let me give you your bearings for the folks at home. At the top is Commons Drive South, and to the left is Gateway South. Everybody's with me on the map. There's two tracks there. It's kind of divided by a little stream or creek or drainage ditch there that goes through the two, but at the top is 11.4 acres. On that, at that time, Carolina statewide was going to put 168 units of affordable housing. On the bottom 6.4 acres, they were going to put 72 units of senior housing. These properties were sold to, or excuse me, were put under contract to Carolina statewide at a reduced price, and page two of your agenda item goes into that. We had an appraisal done, and the price on the 11.4 acres originally was $125,000 per acre, but for this purpose, council approved and sold it for $80,000 per acre. The 6.4 acre tract, it was appraised at $105,000, and was approved at $90,000, and I think the difference of the $10,000 was because of the senior housing situation not being affordable, but more senior housing, but that's what happened on that particular date. Then on January 18th, 2022, Carolina statewide came back, and they said, "We would like to ask for council to make a modification to that agreement." And at that time, they decided that, and I'm going to, and Mr. McCloskey can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding, they decided that the 6.4 acres at the bottom in the blue there was maybe a little bit larger tract than they needed for 72 senior housing units. So they asked if the tract at the top, the 11.4 acre, could be divided into two tracks, one being 7.46 acres and the other four acres. And on the one to the left, the 7.46, they put 78 units of family affordable housing, and on the one to the right, the four acre, they could put the 72 units. Again, if you look back with me, the 72, the 72 units, at this point in time, were always the same for senior housing, so that figure did not change. But the 78 units and the 72 units equal 150 units. You with me so far? If you look back, the agreement originally was 168 units, so there was a small reduction in units there. Okay. January 3rd, 2023, the Carolina statewide came back and asked that there be a modification, and this modification, now, both these agreements, the price never changed. It was $1,488,000, plus or minus, and I told you, I was going to tell you why that. The plus or minus is because it's per acre sale, and until it's actually surveyed out, you don't know exactly what the acreage is. These are kind of, quote, best estimates here. When it's surveyed out, then you would know exactly, and you'd apply that $80,000 to it, or that $90,000 in the examples that were done so far. But on January 3rd, Carolina statewide came back and said, "We need an extension," and so the council considered that and gave them an extension of time until March 2024. No numbers changed on the description. This was an, oops, let me go back. I'm sorry. There was one number that changed at that time. The senior housing was reduced from 72 units to 48 units, okay? And the notes or the agreements were extended to March of 2024. So whatever you do tonight, or don't do anything tonight, they have a valid binding contract until March 2024. Okay? So tonight, the request is in front of you, and Mr. McCloskey will come here in just a moment, but his request is that only applies to the 6.4 acres at the bottom. The top stays the same. That is, the 78 units and the yellow circle there, a family affordable stays the same, 48 seniors stays the same. You would get $912,000 if they're able to get the funding that they need to get, and this project really came to fruition. The council would still see that number, even if you gave all three. And what is the request again? Let's go over them quickly. Number one, they would ask, let me go back, so I don't misstate. They would ask that the bottom number be reduced from 72 to 64 units, affordable housing in the blue. They would ask that the 6.4 acres be donated. That would be a gift to them of approximately $576,000, and they would ask that there be a $1 million grant, 2% interest, low-interest loan for a 20-year period of time. Now, I've already connected Agenda Item 10 to Agenda Item 12. Now let me connect for you Agenda Item 10 to Agenda Item number 11. The request here is for general fund monies. Never before have a council allocated general fund monies for this purpose. Everything, and I'm, again, giving you just the history, everything that's been done in the past has been with CBDG funds, or pass-through of that North Carolina Housing Finance Agreement deal on that one. There are no funds that have not been already committed in the action plan you'll see in Agenda Item number 12. So why is number 11 connected? Number 11 is connected because you're being asked in that agenda item to appropriate $10,000, which Mr. Ray will present, to assist folks in the Town Center to continue to relocate. Again, that would be the first time if you did that. All the times, the money you put, and Ms. Jackson can give you the figure, but I think we're probably around $50,000, $60,000 in relocation over there?
Yes.
Monies that have been used, but they've all been CDBG monies to relocate those residents. Again, I wanted to tie in those two connections, that, again, you're asking in this agenda item for the loan, general fund monies, which you've never done before, and in number 11, again, it's going to be a general fund money request. I think I should sit down now, and that Mr. McCloskey should make his plea to the council as to why he needs these amendments, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, and Ms. Jackson is here, too, and we, as I've said, we've communicated on this and be glad to answer any questions. So Mark? If you want to come here with reference to the map, you'd be welcome to do that.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Mark McCloskey with Carolina Statewide Development, 166 Center Street, Jacksonville. Mr. Carter, thank you for that very succinct summary of our history. I know it's confusing, and there's been a lot of moving parts on this. Going back to October 21, when we first came here and talked to council about this property for affordable housing, I think back and see how much has changed. Like Mr. Carter said, we were sitting here with masks, so there have been a lot of changes within the affordable housing and construction industry since then. You know, shortly after that, in early 2022, we were starting to finally see what the real impacts were from the pandemic and associated supply chain issues we're having on the construction industry. You know, prior to that point in 2021, construction costs on new affordable housing, like we're talking here, was about $85,000 a unit. Since then, the cost continues to rise, and today, that same unit that we built for $85,000 a unit is now about $110,000 a unit, which is about $25,000 greater than when we first entered into our purchase agreements with the city back in '21. In addition to the rise in construction costs, we're also impacted by much higher interest rates for construction loans and permanent mortgage rates. We've quickly seen rates go from 4.75% up to 7.25% for a permanent mortgage, and that greatly reduces the borrowing power for a development like that, and ultimately reduces your ability to have sources for funding. So one approach we've had to address these impacts is to reduce the unit count across the project, just to help reduce the overall cost of the whole project. And any cost savings that we can realize within a development or construction process goes a long way to making a proposed project all that more feasible. So to help make this multifamily affordable development possible, we're requesting that city council allow us to reduce by eight units, going from 72 units to 64 units, and we're also asking your consideration that the land be donated to the project. At 72 units, this project is over $1 million short, so to make it feasible at 72 units, you know, that's where we're asking for a $1 million loan, low-interest loan, to help offset the cost of those additional units. But the project at 64 units, if the city were to make the land donation, would be a much more feasible submittal to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, if you were all so inclined to consider that request. I'm happy to answer any questions or fill in the blanks on dates or unit counts or whatever I can offer.
I have a question, but I think it's going to be from Mr. Carter. I know previously, when this was brought to us, it was contingent on a grant being received, correct?
Not this particular piece.
And I'm talking about overall, when we was talking about this previously.
Yes, sir. If you're speaking of the county making a commitment of $5 million, I believe that is correct. That was on the table, but...
But what we were going to do on this end is that if they had to receive that grant or it stopped the building of the apartments, and that's why we go on back in and changing it.
So back in October 5th, '21, the 11.4 acres is what we submitted for a grant with the county, and we're going to use that 11.4 acres to do all family affordable units with that grant money and the city's participation on a reduced cost. Yes, sir.
Did they ever tell you why you didn't receive it? Because I know they didn't.
It was reallocated for another project. I might have to refer you to the county for specifics.
But you did receive it, and yet you lost it because the North Carolina Housing Finance did not approve your project. Is that correct?
It's a combination. I wouldn't say that exactly. We were seeking additional funding to go with it, so the county participated with a $5 million grant. It wasn't nearly enough to cover it, but $5 million back in '21 went a lot farther than it does today, so we were seeking funding for about another $12 million, which hasn't panned out, and those sources were drawn up.
But because of that, then you ended up losing the project. You basically told the county, "We're not going to be able to draw down that $5 million because we don't have a...
Correct.
The project can't go forward.
That's right.
With, are you finished? With the original plans, with the $5 million coming from the city, um, excuse me, from the county and the city granting the land, how many units was part of the original site plan?
On the 11.4 acres, when we first started talking about this, we were looking at 168 units.
For $5 million? You was going to use $5 million from the county to build 168 units?
I was about to say, 168 units cost $5 million. $5 million from the county that were going to participate, yes.
Okay. So now, that funding was not granted, correct?
It was granted back in '21.
To another agency, right, but you did not receive the $5 million.
Right, but I'll make a distinction that we're still talking about a different piece of property. So if you look on this map, the 11.4 acres is where we had planned to use the $5 million for. The 6.4 acres to the south of it is the project we're talking about now, which is now a family project.
So this is a totally different project than the very first project we talked about or that was presented before council?
With regard to the county's participation, yes. It's still part of all the three purchase agreements we have with the city. So looking at this map, 6.4 acres in the southern part of the tract, 72 units, that's all we're requesting action on this evening. We're asking that that 72 units, which is tied into our purchase agreement, be reduced to 64 units, so that we can continue on and kind of spread out our sources a little bit and make the project more feasible. The properties to the north, that drainage ditch, we're not seeking any requests or action on that tonight.
How much of that product...
I was about to say, as a nonprofit, was there an application submitted for CDBG fundings for this particular project?
Just the form of a citation? We're not a nonprofit.
Okay.
So in general, are you asking, was there a CDBG request?
So CDBG funding would not help in this particular process?
I mean, not generally because there's so limited funds. It's a scarce resource. And through other projects in the city, we've had opportunities for 100,000 here or there on a project. And sometimes working that 100,000 into it is more of a hindrance in your model.
So with the new extension that we have or that was granted, was there a contingency plan that other additional sources had to be acquired for this particular project?
Sure, it's, yeah, it's contingent. I mean, this project only happened if it's, we're successful in securing housing tax credits for it.
Other than the city, did you have to seek out other resources?
Tax, so it would be a combination, kind of like layering of financing. Be the city's participation and be a tax credit would bring the equity to the project. And then there would be a permanent mortgage loan after that.
So other than the city's financing, who else have you secured funding through?
We haven't secured any yet. This is, we've made a preliminary application to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency in January, and a file application will go in in May. And at that point, we'll have the application pending with the state. And then August, we find out if we're successful in that regard.
So this total sale price that I'm looking at is the $1 million you're seeking in financing plus the value of the land, which is 912,000? Or did I confuse something?
Yeah, there's a lot of numbers there to confuse. It's $576,000 for the 6.4 acres.
Go to the April one.
Yes, switch to that slide. Thank you.
This is April 8th. One more. I'll talk for that one. That's what you're asking for.
That's the one you're asking for donation as a donation, the 6.4?
Which is, yes.
The 6.4 land is what you're asking, a donation?
Correct.
And the value of this land, I'm sorry, again, is how much?
576,000.
Is that reduced or is it...
Yeah, thank you for that. I don't want to say that's the value of land. I want to say that's...
What's the value?
That's the contracted price.
That's the purchase agreement price. I'm not an appraiser.
So technically speaking, if I were to play devil's advocate, if we give you the mill and we reduce the tract of this land down to, from 912,000 to 576,000, and your 64 units are billed, then basically you stand to triple, quadruple the amount of that land value and profit. Is that not correct?
I don't think that is correct. Going back to, we're not reducing the land price from 912 to 576. We're reducing it from, and when I say the land, I'm not talking about just the 6.4 acres. The 1.488 value is the entire 17 acres. So that price is going down to 9, going down 576,000 to 912.
This is too confusing.
Let's relieve 912 out of the balance so that...
Sir, which one?
The October 21 slide.
There we go.
See, there's the price.
Thank you.
Ms. Edwards, you got a question?
The 6.4 acres was originally $576,000. And that's what they are asking to be donated, the value that we do, you know, in other words, we not charge them that 576.
So you're asking, so when you're saying donating to give that land, 576?
And that's the value that we have in the contract for that land right now, 576.
Okay. Can we take the slide back to the history of the CDBG funding just for a second?
Ms. Edwards, is your question pertinent to what was up here already on that slide?
It's related. It's point of clarification for me.
Please let her get a clarification.
Did I hear you correctly when you said, oh, do you want me to ask or...
I want you to ask if you have a clarification needs to be made before we go in.
Did I hear you correctly when you said that at 72 units, you're a million dollars short, but at 64, you are not?
Partially. At 72 units, we're a million dollars short. At 64...
And the land.
And the land donated. It comes out of there.
And I'm assuming that the goal is to make your application much more, what's the word? Competitive. So that you have a shot because if...
And when we send it in...
The goal is to make sure the housing units get added, and that takes the application being successful.
Okay. So when I'm looking at this history, I do believe Mr. Carter told us that, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Out of the eight projects, seven was completed by one contractor and one was completed by another contractor. Okay. And for the seven that was completed by one contractor, the most that was granted to him was $250,000. And the most that was granted to the Singleton was 300,000.
That's correct.
I got a question.
Oh, I was, okay.
Finish.
So if we're looking, so if we're looking at donating 576,000 worth of land, that's almost twice as much as what one developer who developed the seven affordable housing, only 250,000 was granted to him. And 3,000 was granted to another, and that was just using CDBG funding. But now we're looking at donating land over a half a million dollars.
Which purchase with general fund money? That's correct.
Is this the first time something like this would have been done in the city? So we would, so there's potential of setting a precedence.
Is a potential.
And a potential lawsuit.
No, precedent. You're exactly right.
Well, if you're setting a precedence and has it been done before, and you can show where one contractor had to have a certain criteria in order to acquire for funding, and someone else is acquiring funding in a different matter, while setting that precedence, it could be an open door for a potential lawsuit.
I don't think it's a lawsuit situation. As I've told you in my comments, you by statute are authorized to make a private sale. That's why that they're here. But you do set a precedent if you decide to give this 6.4 acres of land to them if they are able to get the tax credits and funding that they need. But you also ensure 48 affordable housing units that would be coming to your city that you don't presently have now. So there's, that's why you even engage in the conversation.
Right. So here, okay, so here is what I'm thinking. If we're looking at this loan history, and this can be water under the bridge, and maybe at that time, there was so much going on that I quite didn't understand. But it just seems that if we have a contractor who has a history of being able to build affordable housing, and the success record is there, I'm just wondering, again, why the rules being changed to set a precedence? If this has been our norm, what will be the justification of changing if this is the way that we have been doing business? And you're right, affordable housing, it would alleviate the shortage that we have. And I understand that. But at the same time, with alleviating the shortage, it doesn't give us the right to circumvent the process that someone else doesn't have to abide by one criteria and others do.
That is a consideration. Yes, ma'am.
And we're not, we're not asking to circumvent the process. What we're looking at here is a history of CDBG over the course of, what, five, six years you funded? Made those funding? It goes back 2005. 2005, and it's been, you know, 12 years since the city funded any others. But I know tonight, when you adopt your action plan, there'll be some funding in there for another project. So I guess our request is outside of CDBG funding.
Right, in all fairness, the reduction in CDBG funding was no fault of the city. That was Congress. So we had to work in the operational realms in which we were given.
I was here. I was involved in a lot of these.
I'm just asking questions. If we're donating land, if we're starting to donate land...
What you have to realize is that what worked in the past is not necessarily going to work in the future. We have a situation where we've seen a major inflation. The cost of building has gone up.
Sure.
However, the amount of funds that I think the North Carolina Housing Finance Administration is administering has not kept up with that. So what, and even, even how much we receive from HUD for our CDBG, okay? So I don't believe that we're going to be, we function as the, as a housing development authority. If we insist that only CDBG funds be used, we will not see much dent in the affordable housing lack that we have here in Jacksonville and Ozo County. If we don't come up with a different way of providing funds for affordable housing, then we're going to end up not having much at all being built. That's, that's the reality. Sometimes, you know, this is what we did and it worked sorta. Well, you know, we have over 6,000 unit shortage of affordable housing in Ozo County. What we did, yes, it helped do some, but it certainly did not address the need in a needful manner. We need to consider changing how we think about how we're going to support affordable housing. And I think our, our interest, our participation in this with, with Carolina statewide, I think gives a chance for those projects to go forward. Without our support, that project will not go forward. And so we have the opportunity to provide some or none. That's basically our choice.
Mr. Ray, do you mind if we bring up Ms. Jackson to give clarification on this, please?
I think Ms. Jackson could gladly give us some input on the processes. You know, one of the things that you mentioned while she's coming up, Dr. Washington, is the concept of previously, as Mr. Warden said, we're operating with CDBG funds only. And now we're thinking about creating a system where we're either utilizing our land or we're utilizing a land in a finance, finance package. So that's part of that dialogue moving forward for the council, where you're talking about, Dr. Washington, of what is our new plan moving forward? Does it include land allocations? Does it include a revolving loan, as Mr. McCloskey has asked and said, this could be an option? It could be that supplement. And so, you know, that's part of what our dialogue on the next action item is, is we want to utilize that strategy moving forward for all of these requests. And I think historically, again, as Mr. Carter's done, we have not maximized the potential of our action plan. And so as we get into this action plan in a minute with Ms. Jackson, we'll see that there's hopefully a strategy moving forward where how we utilize that process, as you mentioned earlier, to get everyone included in it as we're looking at the needs of the community to develop out how we're going to be a partner. So that gave you plenty of time.
So in regards to the requests for the 120,000 multifamily, I spoke to Mr. Walker, and he has assured me that he can make that deal work as far as the project that's listed in the plan to bring 72 senior housing units to the city of Jacksonville. So he knows that my funding is limited, and he has acquired other levels of funding to cover that gap. So he knows this is how much I have, this is all I have, and he still was able to submit the request.
A community development corporation?
Yes.
Are they actually get more money from the government or other sources than a private firm can get?
He has, he has the ability to acquire different layers of funding to complete the projects.
Is he a nonprofit?
He is a, he is not a nonprofit. I want to say that he is the, in the same situation as Mr. Clausy in developing affordable housing.
Oh, affordable housing? Because I'm hearing more about workforce housing and income, because we all want affordable housing. A millionaire can't afford to live in a billionaire's neighborhood.
That's correct.
So a lot of times when we start affordable housing, we're thinking about low income. But income based, I mean, I've talked to people, teachers that can't afford to get an apartment in Jacksonville. You know, people that give our news coverage have to get, share apartments in Hubert with three other people because they can't afford to be here. So, and we had talked a while back about a whole idea of economic mobility, which plays into this. So we, we need to have a further conversation with this. Also, I know this is general fund money, but I'm wondering also, since neighborhood improvement actually does this type of work with the staff that's there, why can't that general fund money be moved so that they could help make these decisions going forward? And then I'm going to say this too, because I know we had, we actually voted on extension, but in reality, this is a whole new deal. Because it was a contingency in that, because of that grant. So we're really starting over. That's in my opinion.
We came back in January because our original, you know, we submitted this project last January. It did not get funded. Another project did get funded in Jacksonville, and you'll see that probably starting construction in the next six, six or eight months. We re-submitted again this past January. In order to do that, we needed to show that we still had a valid purchase agreement. That's why we came in for an extension to take it out another year to next March.
Affordable housing, but you said 72 units would be senior housing. And I'm sure there's federal funds for that possibly, but the rest of...
It's also a tax credit deal, 72 senior units.
The rest of it would be considered affordable as well? Or is that just the area that's affordable and everything is out or income based?
When we came back last January, we kind of dissected the property into three tracts rather than just two. And that gave us some flexibility with working with the county and at the same time, the ability to submit a senior, affordable senior housing project on that four acre piece.
But you got that 78 unit of family affordable housing. What, what would that mean based on what your definition of affordable housing?
Well, at the time, it was either going to be a combination of that 78 and 72 together for the county's program where they had $5 million in it. If the 72 units of senior got funded. So all three projects would be affordable through, through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. So it's a competitive process, just like we're building down on Blue Creek School Road now. 9% tax credit or 4% bond deal, but still affordable at the end of the day.
So let me ask you this, Mark.
Yes, sir.
What you're doing is, by doing this, is you're trying to improve your position to get financing, correct?
That's right.
And there's no guarantee that you're going to get it.
There's not. There's not. It's a competitive process across the whole state. There was probably 130 applications submitted back in January, and there'll probably be 30, 35 deals funded across the state this year.
What was that number of affordable housing needs?
The need is over 6,000.
6,000?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, 64 units, we're capturing less than 1% of the market.
This number of units. But how many units can actually, is that the maximum amount of units you could actually do in that area? I know you... I know you're reducing.
For the funding guidelines we use, 84 is the maximum. I submitted it last year at 80 units. We had to back it down to 72 for the reasons I was talking about, the economics of it. And at 72 units, it doesn't work now. I'm backing into 64.
And based on our shortfall, which we can't even put a dent in right now, we could mitigate and not actually fix the overall problem. But I was wondering if you, and this is your business, you know? But is there possible you could have done some kind of deal with a community development corporation to maximize the amount of units that we can get in here? Because that's, ultimately, that's our, that's the idea, is to get as many so-called, I don't like the idea of, income-based houses or workforce houses. Is that correct? That's what we would like to do, I would think, as a council. So, if we could, if we could possibly, like I said...
I mean, it doesn't matter who submits it. I mean, if you're gonna do, using the program we're, we're all talking about, 80 units is the maximum you can do in the eastern region of the United States. Or the North Carolina, uh, eastern region for tax credits. Uh, it doesn't matter if we're doing it or development corporation, we still have access to the same funding for, for tax credits.
Mr. Carter, I have a question. When this deal was being brokered at the very beginning with the county and the city, um, was this project ever put out for bids for proposals for any other contractor?
My knowledge.
So...
That's what? So, it didn't have to be put out in bid?
I guess, okay, hold on. I guess what is giving me angst and a pause is that originally, the deal did not go through and we gave an extension. And we're being asked to do precedent decisions that hasn't been made. And as, you know, I'm looking at Town Center, that I'm just saying, if someone would have opened this bid process to go out for rebidding, once the original deal did not go through, could they have not purchased this land and built a new apart? I, this is just tinkering. We're just wanting something to happen that, it's just giving me a pause about this.
When we got involved, actually, our first, our first approach to the city is we, uh, under the old owners of Town Center, we were going to buy 10 acres and do the project there. And that fell through, uh, prior to, uh, submitting to the county for that grant. So, in the meantime, we were working with the city and knew of the availability of, uh, property in the commons and discussed that property instead.
But we have a developer that's ready to go according to you, Ms. Jackson?
According to his application, when he went through the application process?
And he was never part of the original deal to even broker or to bid on this project from the very beginning that you know of?
Not that I know of.
Let's have this.
I don't, I don't know about you, Mr. Mayor, but we might need a little more information and time to discuss this at another setting.
Let's go ahead and, uh, let's go get a motion to table this for the time being. And, uh, maybe we can look at it in a workshop a little closer and get some more information and...
Well, yeah, that's fine with me, but if I could, I've got a timeline and if I could ask for an easy one, uh, which is a reduction of units. Uh, I've gotta submit this application in, in the coming weeks. If you would consider just the 64 units, I could, uh, at least try to, at least know I have an opportunity to go forward. And then, perhaps in a workshop, we can consider the land donation. I'm, I'm happy to provide any information, uh...
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution A to reduce the number of units and that we table the other measures and resolutions pending further discussion.
Can I make a request? Could, can I be at the next available workshop on May 2nd? Or do you need more time than that?
Can you tie it up?
If that happens.
Will he be able to ask questions during the workshop? Because normally, we don't.
You as the council can ask questions of anyone.
We can ask questions.
Yes, ma'am. Just like you've done tonight.
As amended, as soon as possible.
We have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion that hasn't been discussed already? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
And I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion, so...
Just for the record, we have three.
Raise your hands if you said aye.
Okay, that, that's fine, just for the clerk and our clarity.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time.
All right, also, community outreach appropriated funds. Item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. As previously stated by Mr. Carter, we're gonna roll this into a continued discussion. We had a request come through our Neighborhood Improvement Services where we had set up a process where the city council appropriated funds to assist individuals to transition out of Town Center. And so, the city council decided to designate funds. You'll see on the screen, we designated $50,000 of, uh, Community Development Block Grant funds, which were from the CARES Act to assist this. What the council did is designate those funds to Onslow Community Outreach. Uh, this is how the process was set up. Council takes the action, we give the money to Onslow Community Outreach. Community Outreach then handles the process for us. You'll see on this screen, uh, there were some funding requirements that were adopted with council through that action. The applicants must reside in the Town Center apartments with documented proof. And then, Onslow Community Outreach went through a process for how they would delineate these funds. Uh, there were some stipulations placed on how the funds could be used. You'll see here on this screen, can provide assistance in funding the first month's rent, security deposit, and utility deposits as needed. Um, we have information that came back to us that we've expended all of that $50,000. Onslow Community Outreach has effectively carried out the process that city council requested, and they have additional requests. So, that information came back through our Neighborhood Improvement Services via Onslow Community Outreach. And you heard from Ms. Buckman's presentation earlier that there may be some additional tenants that are looking to move out of the Town Center as they go through their process of a renovation. The pre, the request to council this evening is to appropriate an additional $10,000 in this same format to Onslow Community Outreach to assist in these transitions with the same requirement that's been presented before and previously approved by council. However, these funds would come from general fund, whereas the original funds were part of CARES Act, CDBG.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When I'm looking at the funding requirements, um, if eligible, you're talking about first month's rent, security deposit, yada, okay. So, it has been discussed and brought up that for some of our residents and our citizens that live out in Town Center, that some of them may not have, um, the perfect credit score. Some of them may, um, have been incarcerated. Some of them may have misdemeanors on their records. Can these fundings not be allocated to help those citizens, um, to have their records adjudicated like through an expungement program? Can we not include that? Because if someone wants to go and at least live in a decent apartment, but they have to go through criminal background check, credit check. Um, and there are some things up there that possibly can fall off, but because those individuals didn't have the money to afford it, can that money not be allocated to help those particular citizens as well?
Mayor, I've got a multiple answer here. So, council can choose to allocate these funds however you'd like to allocate the funds. The reason we're bringing the request to you in this format is these requirements were placed on the CDBG CARES Act. And so, we want to follow those parameters to ensure that the process carries out similarly. The second part, I would say, is it, it would sound more like that's the functionality of the Welcome Home Council. Part of this transition plan would be to determine funds to assist in multiple facets. I wouldn't believe that the $10,000 is gonna be an adequate allocation to assist one or two individuals with some of the processes you're talking about. I believe that's gonna be a larger process. We've heard before, um, from Mr. Naresky about some case managers to help navigate through this system. I, I think that's gonna be a larger discussion that's already been presented to council for an allocation request. But I think you're, you're spot on, Dr. Washington, in terms of how you could use those funds. Uh, these would be a dedicated earmark for exactly the original process. If council chose to continue and wanted to expand that, you could. It just creates, uh, we have to create a new pathway to what we use before.
Let me say this, and Tracy might be able to jump in here. I think, was it Pastor Peddaway that was doing those expungement clinics?
She still does.
She still does. There's no cost to that, or is it?
That's correct. That's correct.
No cost to it.
So, that's not a cost.
But the issue is time sensitivity too, so... Because I had an individual that actually called me and they had to get a promissory note. They were able to get into their apartment, but they got a promissory note because that was the only way they were gonna be able to stay and get into this apartment. So, I mean, time is the essence with this.
As Dr. Washington, um, mentioned, there are gonna be some barriers for, um, access to housing. Um, and these are not discriminatory, you know, barriers, but it, it is what it is as far as what these individuals have to face. Um, for those who don't have these barriers, they need that assistance now. Um, I've had several people email, come by City Hall because, um, Onslow Community Outreach, they're out of funds and they directing them back here to us. So, we, um, we have the opportunity, if you all approve, to help those individuals out. They do have a waiting list as well, so there are some people that are waiting. But some of these apartment owners, they're not gonna hold these units for, you know, these folks. So, time is of essence for, for, for these people to receive assistance.
Mr. Ray, is there any way that you can reach out to Reverend Doris Peddaway with the Shepherd's Group Expungement Program just to have a conversation with her and to find out how that program works? And maybe we can set up something specifically?
And, in fact, I have, um, already spoke to Reverend Peddaway, uh, one of the, uh, we had a Housing Resource Fair over there. And we also had the first reentry meeting over there and we had some judges and they talked about some expungement clinics. So, I've had some talks with her. She says it takes a lot of coordination to get that process and that event completely coordinated. But, um, she's very much interested in doing it again.
Because I think she used law students from Campbell University, I think, for one of them at least, so... Yeah, but like you said, it's a whole lot of coordination. It's something you can't just do. I mean, we could do in the future. But we still, this thing...
Well, yeah, that is, that is on the, um, on our department's radar to partner with her and, and bring one here. Um, I've already talked to the folks at Onslow Community Outreach to having that as a place to have the expungement clinic.
Mr. Mayor, may I, point of privilege, uh, could we have, uh, Mike Naresky come up and, and address some of that issue a little bit directly too? Would, would that be an issue?
Yeah, thank you. One of the conversations that we had out at the, uh, state conference was with the head of legal aid for the state. And they explained the different parameters that we can use. They offered their services. We've been in contact with them already, on top of what Tracy's doing. And they're willing to help the individuals with that. And they can get things done. They explained the different parameters. There was a whole two-hour seminar on that subject itself. One of the things that we have to consider, one thing, if an individual has ever been convicted of even a misdemeanor felony, it's never gonna get expunged. It doesn't matter what it was, doesn't matter if your case was thrown out, you're never gonna get that expunged. And, and even to the governor, everybody's amazed, but that's the way that's set up. So, someone who even has a misdemeanor felony, which a lot of prosecutors get people to plead to, it's easy. Yeah, plead to this, nothing will happen to you, it goes. But their lives are destroyed with that. That's one thing we can't change. But the legal aid has been helpful in servicing the individuals of Town Center. They've offered their services. Uh, Councilman Jackson is working directly, as I have. I don't, Tracy, have you worked with legal aid yet? I'm sure you have.
Yes, yes.
Uh, so, there is implementation in place to help us with that. But Tracy's right. If we don't help the people that are now in these situations, these places are drying up. We're gonna lose them within weeks.
Money that is being used for excellent relocation?
The last time that I checked, it was about 1550 for those security deposits, first month rent, and those type of expenses. And some of these, um, folks, they don't have pristine credit. But through OCO, they're working with those individuals and they can charge a little bit more because of that. So, the credit is also, uh, issue that we have to consider, but it's about 1550.
Mr. Benford? One of the, one of the points here is that we know that we need to create the partnerships, as Dr. Washington's pointed out, to, uh, to be able to connect these services. Mr. Naresky explained this on multiple occasions. Uh, Ms. Southwood, she explained their apartment life concept today. That, that RA type of case management to help people connect with services. I think that's what we see in how we're gonna need to do business, as Mr. Warden said earlier, changing the way we do business and create those new partnerships moving forward. Again, this focus is get the need to the people that have contacted Tracy now so that we can help them, and then we figure out a bigger plan moving forward with these partners.
Ms. Clementine Martin wanted to say something. Can she come to the podium, please? She is part with the, uh, expungement program.
I'm the chairman of Shepherd of the Community, and we're the one that does the expungement with Pastor Doris Peddaway. And right now, we're going in Sampson County. We started here in Onslow. We haven't been to Duplin. We already heard from Jones. Because it is a process, but it's a process of everybody putting together. Because like she said, and, and she was just saying, sir, that, hey, we have to make sure these people are able to get expunged. Now, we know certain laws, but the way that we do it, when, uh, we give our clinic, they are expunged that day because we have the judges, the lawyers, we have everybody, the clerks, we have everybody there. By the time they get to us, we done had, uh, FBI checks. We know exactly what we can get rid of and what we cannot. So, if it's very easy and it's very important, it just takes a village to do it, to get it together, because you got to have so many. But I think that's what you should do, you know, so that affordable houses, because it's not gonna do any good for any kind of affordable houses if the person can't get it, because they need it also. So, please, put the expungement, because like I said, we're in Sampson County now. If we have to come back to Onslow, we're fine, but after this, it's going to Jones. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I'd like to make a motion, please. Also, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, the transfer from the general fund to, uh, $10,000 and keep the eligibility requirements the same.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, uh, Tracy, I think you're still up.
Yes. We're gonna have Kathy on the podium to present the first part.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So, coming before you in regards to the annual action plan to discuss the process of how we start with the annual action plan. And from there, I'll turn it over to Tracy to talk about the action plan in itself. So, our action plan utilizes the funds of Community Development Block Grant, which is a program administered by the Housing and Urban Development. It provides community with resources to address a wide range of unique community development needs. And in utilizing these funds, we have to make sure that we are meeting one of three goals. That they are benefiting low and moderate income, as slum and blight removal, or addressing an urgent need such as COVID-19 with our pandemic. Specifically with our HUD goals, ensuring that we're providing decent, safe and sanitary housing, providing a suitable living environment, and then expanding economic opportunities when that is available. The purpose of our annual action plan is to give action... The purpose of our annual action plan is to give action to our five-year consolidated plan. This is actually our last annual action plan of our current five-year plan, which ends on June 30th, 2024. In the action plan, it identifies what activities that we are proposing, what the outcomes will be, and what our budget is based off of our allocation. You'll see in this table, going back to fiscal year 2012, that we had a total of 483,000 that was allocated to us. But as Dr. Washington has stated previously, the allocation has decreased. So looking at the years of 2013 to 2022, we've ranged from 343,000 to 373,000, and those are the funds to attach to the activities that we have taken care of thus far. And in our upcoming year, our allocation is projected to be 398,000. So we do have an increase in this upcoming year. But we know that with all things, that we have more needs than we have the resources And in doing so, when we are taking the funds that we are prepared for, we are expected to make sure that those funds are utilized in target areas. It looks at for the citywide, New River specifically, based off of our census tract, and then downtown area. This is also important when we're talking about the census. Why is it important for the census to be completed? Because that's where our funds actually come from as well. Now, the planning process, when we get started, it is a citizen input that requires a survey to be done, it is developed and distributed, the housing and community development activities that citizens are ranking, what is important to them, our expected funds of 397,000, and approximately 221,000 in program income. And the program incomes comes on the previous slide where we saw the loan payments that are being made. That's where we receive our program income. And then once all that information is gathered, then we start working on the action plan in itself. So the planning process starts in November, and we carry it out all the way through May 31st. During this current year, we have hosted two homebuyer education courses in this timeframe, two money management courses, three public input meetings, a nonprofit funding workshop that is carried over two days, and our annual nonprofit board development conference. I bring up these specific activities because in these specific courses and events, this is an opportunity for us to actually receive feedback on our annual action plan and what is the community input. So we don't limit ourselves to just a public input meeting. The application process begins in December, and it goes all the way through August 2023. Our CDBG Public-Private Partnership Funding Workshop is a two-day event. This two days, it is an opportunity for nonprofits, developers to come forth and learn about the application process when it comes to our CDBG funds and our public-private partnership funds. Your attendance at this funding workshop is required if you are seeking funds in the upcoming year. Once the funding workshop is complete, applications become available in December, and then they're due in February. One of the requirements, and why we choose to do it in February, is because there must be attendance at a training of some type of board development training for your executive director and your board. If you do not have that plan, then our annual nonprofit board development conference is available for you to attend to receive your training. The application review is, our committee is with our NISAC members, which stands for Neighborhood Improvement Service Advisory Committee. The recommendations are then brought before city council after the budget is approved. Once the budget has been approved, we will then come with our contracts drafted after the council has approved our recommendations from the advisory committee. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tracy.
Thank you. So thank you, Mayor, City Council, for having me. The current priority needs were identified through the community input survey. In that survey, we identified in our con plan, these are the activities that we can do in that five-year plan. In this final annual action plan, of course, priorities were identified, include the affordable housing, which include homeownership opportunities, rehabilitation, acquisition, and multifamily development. Also in our con plan, populations, targeted populations were identified. So we found that a priority need for supportive housing for the elderly and disabled persons from the community input survey. As a result, the available opportunities and activities that we're going to be funding is our down payment assistance, which helps low to moderate income people obtain homeownership, acquisition of reconstruction projects, such as what we did in country club villas, rehabilitations, that's repairs for homeowner occupied and rental investment properties to obtain low-interest loans and grants, public services, collaboration with the nonprofit community, and of course, affordable housing partnering with multifamily rental housing This is a breakdown of our funding application, allocation, and this is how we propose to spend the money, to include the affordable housing piece for $120,000 for ECCDI. So we're going to be spending six, over $640,000 in CDBG and program income funds. So it is our recommendation for city council to adopt and approve the annual action plan for fiscal year 2324. This is our final plan in our five-year consolidated plan. We're going to submit this plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by May 15, 2023. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Questions, Council? Thank you, Tracy. They're asking to adopt the annual action plan, entertain a motion at this time?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You're not on favor, signify percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right, brings us, we're going to go to our report section now, and I'll start with Mr. Jackson.
I'd like to start with, earlier today, we attended the fabric of the community awards ceremony, and it shows the best of our community. Folks is volunteering, you know, government cannot take care of everything, and you don't want it to be in your business for a lot of things, but our nonprofits and our volunteers really do a lot of the grunt work when it concerns taking care of the people out there. I'm going to segue into, like Michael Naresky mentioned, we have Jacksonville-Onslow Welcome Home Council. And what we, we did last week is do a simulation, and heard some of us talk about going to jail. It was divided down into a one-hour period, which actually was a mock of a whole month, and it was 15 minutes per week is how we dealt with that. And it showed how difficult it is for a person to actually go through the process of becoming a citizen again, you know? We say the debt is paid, but the debts are given before they actually can come out, and expected to pay things like child support, they're expected to pay parole. Some, if they've had drug charges, they might have to have a machine put in to their, their vehicle so they have to blow. So it was, it was a snapshot into that reality. And I think over 140, some folks attended, participants, so I think it was a great amount of participation between Carteret and ourselves, so. It was just, like I said, I opened an experience, and I love being a part of this, this group because it allows us to collaborate together. And I've said before, as many organizations, we can never have a limit of the organizations, but it's organizations working together that are already doing what they do, but they're actually targeting to helping folks that's coming out of, just as involved, folks. So that's great. We attended the conference, the reentry conference that was held by the state, and we did get a lot of great information, but one of the things I did see is communities that really work together, from law enforcement to business owners, to make sure rehabilitation takes place in their community. Because it's actually, you know, we, it comes down to dollars and cents, a lot of things. It costs more for us to house individuals that's been locked up, folks, than it is for them to come out here and be taxpayers and put money into the system. So hopefully, our community understand that it's a greater value to actually work with people that are returning to our community. One other thing I have to mention, while I was at the convention, or the conference, I got a call from Dr. Washington concerning an issue that took place with one of my family members. Immediately, I, I was a little concerned, because she's, it's hard to believe, but she's considered elderly at this point. And, but I know we call her Dr. Washington, but I was glad that Nurse Washington was there. And she, she stepped up, she called, I was able to talk, she followed my cousin to the emergency room on base, and then I was able to reach my other family members. She let me know she was doing okay, and she was stable, so. But on behalf of my family, I want to bring this card and let you know that we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And, I don't know about dinner. You get a snack, though. I appreciate it. I really do. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Sosa?
No report.
Mr. Bennett?
No report this evening.
Dr. Washington?
Yes, I would just like to make a comment that last month, Councilmember Jackson and myself had an opportunity to attend the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, D.C. And it just so happens that the month of March is also Women's Month. And the particular day that we were there, I do believe the date was Monday, March the 25th, First Lady Jill Biden actually addressed the delegate, and basically, just prior to her walking out on the stage, was when all of our cell phones was going off because of the horrific news about the shooting that occurred in Nashville. And her point was very poignant in terms that our children are our future, and if we are not safeguarding their presence, there will not be a future for our children. And the reason that I'm bringing this up is that with March being the Women's History Month, there are so many things that is currently going on in society that is affecting women, but also our young girls. Many of you are old enough to know who Shirley Chisholm was. She was the first African-American congressman from the state of New York. She was also the first woman to put in her presidential bid for the United States presidency. But she has a favorite quote that I just love to use. And her favorite quote is, "Anything that has to do with a woman starts when the doctor says it's a girl." Women are still fighting for their position in these United States of America, even in Women are still fighting for equality. Women are still making 67 cents to the dollar that the man is making. And the CDC just released publication that one in three middle school girls have attempted suicide in the United States of America. Although this council may not see issues and problems that other cities around the country are experiencing, we are going to be tasked with putting our egos aside, and what type of future are we going to leave our children of today that will make their future just a little bit easier than currently what it is? Because we have that daunting task as adults to make sure, if nothing more, our children, particularly our girls, their lives are sustained in order for them to have a future. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things for our friends who are here and watching. On Friday, April 28th, at 4:00 p.m. here in city, in council chambers, we are recognizing Military Child of the Year semifinalists. And I know on the first Thursday in May, at the Monford Port Marine Memorial, will be the National Day of Prayer Observation. So if you, like I, believe our city, state, and nation need prayer, please join us the first Thursday in May. That is all, sir. Thank you.
Just, I want to make a comment on that reentry simulation and so forth. It was eye-opening for me. I mean, I, I don't know anybody personally that's incarcerated, well, maybe I do, that's incarcerated, but, but as a general rule, I don't come in contact with those folks, and that was, and what they have to face coming back out, once they've been paroled, they've served their time. We throw so many, we, society throws so many barriers at them that it makes it tough for them to reenter a productive lifestyle. And so, so many times, they feel like they have no choice except to go back to their old ways, go back, they end up back in prison, and, and we have to, we have to change that, and I think we will. I think we'll slowly change that. As all things, most, most good things that change, change slowly, so. It was, it was an eye-opening, and I appreciate the, the opportunity, so.
I want to echo what Mr. Jackson said about the fabric of the community today. It was, it's good to know that we got the people that do step up, step forward in our community. And what really amazed me a lot today was how young some of them were, and that's the, you know, that's good to see that the, the youth in our community actually care, are becoming part of this caring community that we, we've developed. And I thought it was a very good ceremony today, and congratulate all those that were recognized. Anyway, Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me get my screen up here. I appreciate the opportunity to deliver this, and thank you for changing the agenda so we could do this with all of our people here to join us. The One City Moment starts with the council, and part of the discussion tonight is fantastic because we're talking about our partnerships, we're talking about how we're going to make things happen, not just today, but tomorrow, and for many years after, all of us are not standing here. So I just say it again, there's, there's not many times we, we get to think about the work that council does and to appreciate it, but these discussions are fantastic, and I enjoy being a part of it as much as everyone else here, whether you drove three and a half hours or you drove just down the street. So we're excited, so thanks, Mayor, thanks, council, for doing what you do. And last week, we were able to go through our Community Development Week celebration. Part of our discussion is tonight, go around some of the beauty that we're able to witness each and every day, but here you'll see the mayor and Pam and Tracy and Jason Larson at the kickoff event. We're over at Myrtlewood, and we're talking about some of the properties behind these individuals are areas that we've renovated, and that we have worked with individuals to go through training and education, and to get them homeownership, which is a beautiful operation that, that we do, that Tracy's team works on each and every day to make sure that we're able to be active and about. One gentleman there next to Max Jackson is a city employee, and he's now a new homeowner, and, and we, we welcome that opportunity to have that partnership. We have council members there, and plenty of community members to provide some support in our team, and just really exciting. The whole point there is we're happy, we're clapping, because this is an The whole point there is we're happy, we're clapping because this is an awesome event for us as a community and for CD Week, it was excellent. You see some very awesome, amazing people here as part of our team to make things happen. Also, and Mr. Warden was there too. But also as part of the week, one of the things that the Neighborhood Improvement Services team does is they appreciate the people that help them make an impact in the community. So no reason for me to be in that picture, but everybody else was there that day making things happen. They put together an annual event, they bring in the partners and provide a meal and an opportunity for fellowship. So again, Tracy's team pulling in members of her advisory committee, part of the team, and even Wally decided to get in the picture for some reason. I don't think he was there the whole day, but he showed up to get a plate of food. If Wally's here now, he can say something. Well, he's still not here, so we got nothing for him. But the, the beautiful thing here is Pam set up an event that was very streamlined because the goal was make sure we say thank you to those that help us make an impact in the community. Volunteers of a team cooking, volunteers putting together food, volunteers eating food. And that's sort of the whole part of, of the appreciation there. You saw individuals from throughout the city teams be able to say thank you. And one of the coolest things at the end of the event, Pam said, "If there was only a way next year that we can thank every city employee." And so we said, "There's going to be a way." And that's, that's Pam and Tracy making it happen. We're going to continue to thank every city employee for the work that we're doing and we're real excited. Last thing here, Mayor, part of the reentry simulation, we mentioned that we had council members there, Chief Yonero is there, he's been really excited about it. Word on the street is that he had to go back to jail for failed drug test, but it happened. And it's just, it's just part of the process. Is Chief here? No, because he's, he's there. So we lost Chief Yonero, but I appreciate there. This goes back to our point earlier, we need to create the partnerships to be successful. We know this is not a function that the city's going to jump into, it's not something that we know how to do. But we know how to be a partner in an organization and we want to be partners with, with anybody that we can provide a service to our citizens in our community. So I appreciate the council members. Again?
Drop again, jail, that's what happened.
I heard he couldn't get a bus ride to his next spot, so he had to go back and beg to get a bus ticket. So again, for the council to be active, for staff to be active and to participate in these events, that shows the dedication through our community of how we're trying to make a change and how we're trying to affect change each and every day. So I tell you, Mayor, there's multiple things going on. This is just a highlight of a two-week period, but the discussions tonight and the things that we have going on show that we're making progress and we're going to make more. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. John, you got anything? All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and take a short recess, go to A and B for our FY24 budget discussions.
We have to tie the individual right now?
It's all right, we don't need them. So Mayor, what we're looking at now is we wanted to give the council the opportunity to discuss the budget during our normal scheduled agenda. And obviously, we scheduled it a little long this evening, so I apologize for our discussions, but as I said, they were great discussions. What we sent out was a request to go through these white papers so that you could look specifically at these items for tonight. And so when, I want to go over those, but I first wanted to show you what we handed out. So in front of you, you have a couple pages that we provided you to get started, and I'll just walk you through them. The first page is the calendar, so you'll see the FY24 Budget Consideration Schedule. This is what we sent out. We want to make sure we clarify, April 18th being today, the council agenda item is May 2nd.
I was going to say, I thought we'd be May 2nd.
May 2nd and the 16th. And so that's our two May items. And May 2nd is actually the first meeting. Yeah, the first is a Monday, the second is the first Tuesday after the first, after the Monday. So anyway, so it's May 2nd and the 16th, and then back to June 6th for our consideration if all goes as planned. So you'll have the 18th, May 2nd, May 16th, and June 6th.
So there's no May 9th?
There's not a May 9th. No, ma'am. And so then, there's another page we gave you and it's got City of Jacksonville on top. It's a one page. It shows the five-year fund balance comparison for general fund. This is an up-to-date version. You have this same page in your budget book, but we've updated the numbers. If you'll go down to the six column, looks like 2023, it'll show you that the closing balance projected at the end of 2023 is 37.374147, and that's fund balance reserve. Then if you go over to the right, utilizing the previous audit and looking at the projects that we have, 21 million of that is unassigned fund balance, so then effectively 16 million is restricted. So when you're talking about things that we're going to consider at our, at our next discussion, you're looking at the 21 is unrestricted, 16 plus or minus million will be restricted funds for things that we've already allocated, projects, things moving forward.
I noticed that we, we're still projecting the same as what we finished the year. We're, we're, what, three quarters of the year through? Do we have a?
We don't have a good handle on, on where we stand.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Do we have a handle on it? We're, we're really in the last, last little bit?
Yep. Well, we never, we never have a, a, a good number like that. We go to the departments and ask them what they estimate they're going to spend out of their budget. And based on what they estimate, you know, that's, that's where we get the best, you know, estimate. But until you get your actual audit, until you close your books, you really don't have a good number. The reason, because that 6.783 million that was used to balance the budget, that's the variable out there. And that's, that stays there until you basically get your audit, you know, in other words, you don't know how much you actually spent of your fund balance in that previous year until you get your audit. Really?
Yeah, I do, I do want to clarify a little bit. We do anticipate of the 6.7 million, we are, what we are saying is that we do not expect to spend that much fund balance. We expect to spend, right now, looking at the full year estimates that were submitted by the departments, around the 2.78, which is where it says amount spent.
Okay. And that, and that leaves you, well, that leaves you still breaking even on the unassigned fund balance, is that what?
Well, that's the part that we don't, we don't calculate restricted versus unrestricted until the end of the year when we close out the books. That's a calculation that we do with the auditors. So we don't ever know going into year-end what that split is until we get more, you know, we get the books closed out and look at our projects and our encumbrances that are rolling over. And we, part of the restricted is our budget that we adopt this year, so there's a lot that goes into determining the restricted versus the unrestricted.
And the change on this document, Mayor, the reason we give you the updated document is if you go to your page seven in your budget book, it'll show you the closing balance for 2023. In that document, on the date we provided that, was 39.55 million. So now, and it also had a lower adopted budget because we make amendments throughout the year. So as we make those amendments, those items can also impact that fund balance if we're appropriating additional fund balance. So that number was at 39.5, and then going back to how Sabrina explained, you see the increased amount of what's spent, now the fund balance appropriation will put us at a projected closing balance of $37.3 million. So that's important for council to keep an up-to-date number as you're moving forward the process for, just like items like tonight, we're asking for a $10,000 appropriation, that's going to come from your fund balance. And so when you make that change, that effectively comes back out of that, that number there. So we want to move that one forward in the process. And then we, we gave you one additional page on the front, it's two-sided. On the front, it's the capital reserve, and I believe Mr. Warden had asked this question originally. So if you look at the, the top page, it says capital reserve, and then it'll show you under revenue council initiative, that is effectively the 4% capital reserve tax allocation.
That's on the provision every year.
And so you'll see for FY23, the amendment shows that's about 1.776 million. What we're proposing for FY24, based on the growth, is 1.83 million. So that's the revenue line that we put into our capital reserve fund to fund these projects. So then when you go down to the expenditures, you'll see prior year commitments and then new commitments, the new commitments being this year of the 1.148 we're proposing. And then you're going to see a, an ending balance proposed after FY24. When you flip that paper over, you're going to have a couple colored charts on here, but it'll show you at the beginning of the year, it'll show you that projected beginning balance for the year at 1.382. It'll show you the full total revenue, so it'll give you the fund balance plus the new 1.83. Then it'll show you the expenses. So one of the things we wanted to clarify is the payments committed, as was one of our previous questions, Jack Emiette has a $707,000 payment, Jacksonville Park, that's our 400 acres, has a $483,000 payment, and then Sturgeon City has a $29,000 allocation. So those commitments are things that we're going to have on the books moving forward every year that will take out of that 1.8 million approximate start of the year. So we have those paybacks that we put in, and so that's going to show you that 1.2 million dollar commitment.
But, but that Jack Emiette and the Jacksonville Park are actually payments back to the general fund, unrestricted general fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we're taking out of one pocket and putting it in another pocket.
So you'd move that over. Correct. And so then, when we're allocating money from general fund fund balance into the capital reserve, then we're moving it back, as Mr. Warden said, and then reallocating it, because that's how we track it. So effectively, you could see that money, if you reallocate it, move to that spot. Sturgeon City, those payments are planned out to end in FY28. The recreation land is FY25, and then Jack Emiette, per the previous question, closes out after FY27. So you're going to see those long-term commitments onto those expenses for those one, two, and three years. Then on the bottom of there, that shows you the FY24 proposed projects that would come out of this section of the capital improvement plan. And you see the Miracle Field, the Northeast Creek, Sturgeon City Boardwalk, and the Kerr Street Fishing Pier. And then that'll show you the total expenses and then give you the estimated ending balance for the year. Just want to update those numbers for you, those questions that we had previously, and then just ask you to add these to the book. Yes, sir.
What's the tax rate? What is now?
What is, one penny on it?
450,000.
I thought it was 460?
Right now, it's for FY23, it was 444,000. I think it's like 470, something, I think they're about.
So it's growing about 300,000, so, 30, 30-something thousand.
Yeah, approximately, that one penny on the tax rate, approximately, it's say about 450, plus or minus on the specific there, but, I mean, we are seeing growth, which is why we want to track, track those numbers as we move forward.
How does that compare with the county? Do you know?
I do not, no, sir, but I'll check their comparison.
Ours is smaller.
Well, I know that.
Percentage growth.
Okay.
Yeah, we can ask the percentage.
There's so much more growth.
I guess where I'm going, at some point, when we're talking about county contributing to this and we're contributing to that and we're being asked to match, our match is misleading in terms of comparing it to the county because the county's using part of our assess valuation to make their contribution. You follow me?
Yeah.
And I think we've got to keep that in mind.
Exponentially.
Usually about 30%.
Yeah, their overall, well, if we look at even their overall general operations, they proposed a budget next year of 200 million. Our overall operations are 90 million. That's overall. So we're, we're half, just looking at their general, not looking at their total budget, not including their capital.
You know, if you look at their population, our population official is 72, there's over 200,000. You know, so just if you, you say with that population, also goes some, some property value in that. So we're a lower percentage of population of the county. And we're a lower percentage than in the past in property values because of all the growth that's taken place in the unincorporated areas.
Yeah, I appreciate having that information sheet next meeting to show, show that county city comparison. Ain't much man without a house on it now.
We'll get it, Mr. Bitter. We'll compare those numbers.
Okay.
Show you the growth rates as well. So Mayor, if we, if we're on to the, to the white papers, the first one, it's page 23, if you got your book, but it's the Employee Compensation Plan and Personnel. The purpose of this is to show, and the reason we have it as the first page, is this was the basis for how we started the budget process this year after our discussion with council during our retreat. So page 23, the, the comment is, "We built the plan using the pay plan integration as fundamental step one. We used the base budget, put in this 5% number, and that's what we built from in that point." So we listed the request from departments on the bottom of that page, again, so that council will be aware of what we're going to track this year and to give you a precursor for what we could see next year to be those requests for personnel. Because we see those requests are going to come through next year and, and they'll most likely be validated based on this year's needs assessments and reviewing. But the items we did include were the 5% market and merit increase, and that's based on our market study and our continual review, the grant technician, the meter technician, the admin assistant for Neighborhood Improvement Services, just the temporary. And then we stated just for the fact for council that we moved the police officers into the overall pay plan and out of the step plan. Again, that, that doesn't make a significant impact, but overall, as we move forward, we would prefer not to have to talk about different employees and different plans. So now, all employees will effectively be in one pay plan except for our telecommunications. They'll still be in this, in the step plan. So everybody else, if we're 600 plus or minus full-time and then 80 plus or minus part-time, will be in this one plan and roughly 17 plus or minus communicators will still be in the, in the step plan.
Why?
So what we did, we only had two groups. We had the, the police officers, one, two, and three, and the communicators. And Chief Yonero put that out there, just like Chief Tomlin had done, to the officers and to the communicators and said, "What would you like to do moving forward?" A lot of our communicators are new and a lot of police officers are new as well, but it's a smaller group. And so the example is, there were seven surveys sent out to the communicators, four said stay, three said go, and so there's your, there's your survey results. Chief said, "I'm empowering you to look at this." And so we'll review it throughout the year with those individuals, just like we've done with the police officers. Those who came back, about 90% of the police officers wanted to switch over. And it's really just that cost-benefit analysis for them. If you look at the potential for a plus or minus 5% merit market increase for next year for the police officers, the step would have given them roughly 1.8%. So they did the math and said, "If council is committed to this pay plan, then exponentially, it's better for us to move to this plan." And so we just have to show that commitment. But that's that transition. So I just want to make sure that we're playing from the same field as we're looking at these employees moving forward.
How does that work with the police department leaving their plan that they're on, coming back to the compensation plan that we currently have?
So what will happen is we go through that review process, which we did, looking at our numbers, and we look to see how those individuals would go into the pay plan, because we already had those positions programmed in, so we transition them. Some of those numbers are included in your budget because there would be some movement, let's say for Police Officer 3, that person at the July 1, just like the improvements you made during this fiscal year, the 2.2 to 2.6 million dollars, there may be $500 that goes to that police officer. That would clarify, that would make that transition occur. This would finalize the 2.6 million dollars that you previously allocated with the pay plan adjustments. Does that make sense on the processes? We're trying, we want to eventually shift everybody and, and that's part of where we're at. And that's why this is that first fundamental page for us as the baseline for how we developed it. Questions on that? One of the things you'll see, that 5% merit market, that's set on the updates that Kimberly's been giving you throughout the year, right? We're monitoring our market and we're basing it on those factors. There's a lot of things inside of that market, so you'll at, and that's why this is that first fundamental page for us as the baseline for how we developed it. Questions on that? One of the things you'll see, that 5% merit and market, that's set on the updates that Kimberly's been giving you throughout the year, right? We're monitoring our market and we're basing it on those factors. There's a lot of things inside of that market, so you'll see that presentation. And so what we'll do is, remember, the market change is effective in July of the year. The merit changes aren't effective until January, because we have to have our evals. And so you have two, two different items hitting two different times. So theoretically, every six months, an employee with the city has the ability to have an increase in their pay, which for us is a great plan. It shows that commitment consistently throughout one year, over the next year, over the next. So that full merit isn't realized except in a calendar year, not in a fiscal year. You only realize half of it in a fiscal year.
Mr. Ray, I have one, okay. Down below where it talks about the following requests have not been included within the '24 budget. So looking at number three, the Neighborhood Improvement Service Manager, the reason, the reason I'm bringing that up is because when Ms. Jackson informed us that we are now a designated HUD agency, how do you see her load or her staff load impacting and whether or not if they will be able to effectively carry out the responsibility? Now, that's another really plus in our feather, because I think the closest HUD is in Wilmington, or are we the designated?
Wilmington.
Okay. So with this particular area, do you foresee that her office will increase in terms of its workload, that she would need some backup other than the temporary because of all of the housing initiative that can eventually funnel through?
You picked the perfect example out of this list, because this is where we define that need. So this is a new designation this year. We could, you can take a couple different plans. You can determine, do you try and jump out ahead before you define the need, or do you define the need through the year and then allocate it on the back end? So this position, the way that it's worked historically is, for example, when Tracy was in this role and there was a previous director, when Tracy was promoted to the director, that position disappeared, and it was absorbed into the department, and then Pam is the next spot. So theoretically, what you're seeing is Tracy as a director and Pam here, there's a slot open historically. It's not open now, because we don't have the position. So what we see now with this new designation with HUD is, we have to define what we're going to do with the designation. For example, there's a request from an entity in, I think it's outside of Wilmington, but they've asked us to come and put on a, a housing program for them on a Saturday, and so is that part of our general operations, or is that part of outside activities for the individual? We need to define that. I would think that there's going to be an increase in the workload, but professionally, I, I can't define that, and even in our discussions with Tracy, I know that it's something that's going to be a priority for next year, and I'm confident that we'll be able to, to determine that sooner rather than later. But right now, we don't know. They just received their first request. I mean, they've received one request in this period of time, and we're going to review that and see how that process works out. That's a, that's an awesome question on that position. Any other questions on these or this page? Okay, we're going to go over to the next one, which is page 24, resiliency of government. And as I said on the previous page, your action that you take on that, if council doesn't have any problems with what we've included, would be based on your final approval of the budget. That's going to be your action on the market and merit and those positions, so that'll be within the process. So then when you get over to resiliency, the point here is that the FY '24 initiative is actually council adopted goal eight, be proactive in protecting safety and welfare. As we discuss this over and over again, I don't feel there's a reason for us to allocate funds for an emergency response, because that's what our general fund reserve is for, and our actual other fund balances as well. So if something happened with our, with our enterprise funds, we would respond that way. We can always take an action in a crisis to respond and then bring that item to council for you to allocate those response funds. The point here is, we need to maintain that fund balance reserve for this number, and I use the number of 8.1 plus or minus million dollars as what our last response to a weather event was, to a hurricane. And so that 8.1 is our ability to respond before we have to have reimbursement from FEMA to figure out the process that they're going to assist us in. And so that's just a number that needs to be remembered throughout the year as the fund balance reserve is for this situation.
Good segue. We, we, do we have a contract, an existing contract for a FEMA-approved contractor to come in on call if we have that situation?
But we don't have, we don't appropriate money.
Right, I understand that, but, but we do have an open-ended contract where they're on call and they're obligated to perform, and we're, of course obligated to pay.
Two of them, one for the, the actual debris pickup, and the other one's for debris, debris management, you know, actually keeping the records.
Until October of this year.
Till, till October, and you're going to be putting another one out.
We're working on the document now.
We'll go through the same process, then we'll bring it back and give you the update. But the, the point there, where Mr. Warden's at, is none of that's allocated for a response until we need it, you know? And so that's, that's, it's a little different in the previous budgets, how, how we've looked at some of those numbers. So it's just important that we state that a couple of times, because throughout the year, if we're asking about how we utilize our fund balance, whether it's restricted or unrestricted, we want to go back to that concept of, that's our, it used to be called the rainy day fund. Well, literally, that's our disaster mitigation fund, and that's why we.
This 8 million dollars in 2018 will be worth a lot more.
That's right.
What's that cost to deck?
And I think that's some of our comments tonight, is why I say it's valuable, is theoretically, that could already be a 10 million or 11 million. So we, we just need to know those numbers. We'll never have anything except the best guess, and, and so that's what we're going to pocket there.
It's a good call, though, to just go ahead and simplify it. If we're all considering that chunk of the general fund as the emergency disaster response, there's no sense to allocate it, allocate it additionally and duplicate within departments.
Yeah, because those are all wags, right? Those are all earmarks. As long as council understands the concept that you will have to respond based on something that happens, we're on great footing.
That part of the explanation of why do you add that much on the sign balance?
Sure, we could ask that.
Yes.
And that's the first part of the answer is, that's why it's there. And that, as the mayor said, 2018 was 8.1, well, 2024 is whatever the number is.
You said you mentioned, what is, what's the contingency amount?
In the budget?
Yeah.
Well, the general fund and the utility fund both have $200,000 in contingency. That's it.
That's not much.
It's a very small number, if you compare that to the overall budget. $200,000 is what a town of 2,000 allocates. But we're fine with that. Like, we don't, we don't need a larger number, because we have, that's part of that transparency and the oversight, is we're confident in the way the budget operates, and just like we've done this year, if we need to bring something back to council for consideration, we're going to bring it to you. So that's part of that process. Yeah, if any area that you would put something there, contingency would be a great place to place a number.
I'm like, I don't know if this is fact or fiction here, but I've always been told this, that you have, you know, the LGC recommended that you have at least a month's worth of funding to be able to continue operation of government. Is that not?
I think, I think, I think you're on the money. Somewhere along there.
So let's not count that, that 11 million dollars for emergency response.
It's not. Back in the day, let me clarify that one. Back in the day, Mayor, and I promise you, I'm like Mr. Bittner, I swear that at some point, when we were trained to do this job, the LGC told us, 8% represents 1/12 of the year, and if you don't have that, we're coming to talk to you. Sabrina's checked it, everybody else has checked it, Chalante said we're crazy and that it doesn't exist now with the LGC that we have that requirement. However, best practice is, we need to have at least three months, because of the way sales tax comes in. So the 8% is wonderful, but let's think 24%, right? Let's think about, if a COVID happens, what do we do when we don't have that sales tax? So, so I apologize if I misled you in a previous meeting to say that was still there, but someone just trained me to be that fiscally conservative and said, at least have 8%. So that's just a practice now, Mayor.
The requirement may be gone, but the need is not.
We know the need's there, and I think that's the point, Mayor, is we want to make sure that out of that unrestricted, we have the ability to respond should we need to do something. And that flexibility's good. If we're good there, I'm going to switch over to 20, page 25, fee schedule. So the fee schedule's a bigger item, that it's in the back of your book, and, and we ask that you go through the fee schedule, and we can schedule that time if we want to go through any of those items. I encourage you that if there's, if there's pages, sections, or items that you want us to go over, potentially, we hit that at the workshop next meeting, so we can hit those items. You may see areas in, in any department that you want to earmark, and if you've got some of those now, ask away, because the fee schedule's the whole document. So we're presenting it in its entirety, not just with some small items, but every department, every year goes through a comprehensive review of their associated fees, and then we bring that back in this budget, so you review that as a body totally. And a lot of times you'll see us try and bring some items throughout the year to review it. Our process is so much more effective that we don't try and change our fees mid-year, we, we do them with the budget, with the adoption of the budget. And so theoretically, as I say, for the, for the May 3 of the next meet, or May 2 or another meeting, ask us specifically, as we said before, if you email us on something, we'll send that out to the council as a whole. You may ask about an inspection fee. What is this number? There's some that are raised, some that are lowered, some we've removed out with our fire marshal, we've removed outs, a complete inspection, and put that as a total different process. So instead of a flat fee, it's based on a response or based on a, an overall inspection. So I just ask that you look at the fee schedule, and we can have a larger dialogue that with each individual department head, because that's a bigger item. Questions on that? So we go over to 26, this is the equipment replacement plan. This goes back to assessing the needs appropriately and maintaining that quality of life. We broke this down in a specific page, because if not, you're going to go through the department budgets individually and look for those items. Typically, what we see is, we want to know what it's costing us to upgrade or replace equipment in each fund throughout the year. So you'll see that bolded as the general fund, 3.8 million dollars, water and sewer, 518,000 dollars. These are numbers we need to maintain, because then we're looking for symmetry in what we do year over year. How much capital are we placing annually? I can tell you, these numbers are right in line with what we've been doing over the past 10 years, but you do see some fluctuation. We've spent a lot of time during this review process of asking the questions to each department of, why are you replacing this? Are you replacing it because it's reached a number on the odometer? Are you replacing it because you would like to ha, get rid of your Dodge Charger or your Dakota, or whatever that one was that we were trying to get rid of? Or are you replacing it because the maintenance needs are greater than the cost to replace it? That's the principle that we're utilizing throughout our fleet maintenance, and that all of our departments are reviewing again throughout this year. You know, some of the easy things are, you look at a department that gets more equipment in terms of vehicles, and you say, well, that's just overspending. We're basing it on a science. There's a metric. It's not that when a truck gets to 120,000 miles, it needs to be shot. It's based on the amount of time that the fleet crew has that vehicle inside of a bay at the shop, and how long that out of service impacts that team that needs to use that equipment. Those are all those factors. And we have a plan for the fleet team, and we have plans within each department. We want to update those schedules this year individually for each department.
What are our watch, watch guard cameras for the police department? Is that in, the in-car cameras?
Yes.
Where you at, Mayor?
Third line.
Oh, watch guard.
Yes. Yeah, they're changing over, you know, they're, they go into a different, watch guard's the newest camera. So, you know, they don't, they, when they, they don't change out all the cameras at one time. They change them when they, they change the cars. And so we phase out the old ones, and, and as we bring in the new ones, we're, we're putting them in as we equip the car. So that's why you see that over a number of years.
And over on that page 27, you'll see internal service funds, and you see one listed as ITS network lifecycle. Remember, on these internal funds, we charge that back, so as I've said before, those operate as basically our enterprise funds, so each department pays in to these departments. And they pay into that fund, and then those individuals buy those items out of that fund. The ITS network has a balance. So for example, this 372, we can take that out of that full balance based on how we manage that fund. And we manage that fund with policies and procedures that say, we want to maintain a balance of this much in that fund, just like we do in the other funds, but we take the excess out and we can use that for these items that we need, which are capital end-of-life cycle items. So those are just a little different than how you'd operate the general fund. Just because you see this 372, the question for some people is, well, where do, where do these lifecycle things come from? They come from all departments, but we bring them here into an internal service fund, and we maintain that.
Quick question, how long do you want to continue doing this tonight?
As long as you tell me. If you say we're done, Mayor, I'd say tap out, and I have another option for you, if you give me an option to give you another time. So the request was, if possible, check your schedules for Monday afternoon, Mayor. I know that's not a scheduled, and I don't know what your schedules look like, because I haven't asked anybody. It's Monday. The Monday before Tuesday, because some of us are going Tuesday night or Wednesday to the League of Municipalities meeting. So Monday af, Monday night, at the earliest, everybody could get there, that we could walk through the rest of these items, and then our community request.
Sounds like a plan.
I gotta go look at my, I gotta go look at something, because it seems like.
Yeah, Monday's the 24th.
At 5:30?
Whatever time you can get there.
The earlier you start, the earlier you get done, so it's a quick.
Mr. Carter's going to speed back from out of town to get there in time, so.
Where are you going to be? You're from DC. I'm, but I, I'm not sure I can check quickly. I'll be. I'll be here as soon as I can.
Yeah, Mayor, like I said, if we can do that, I would welcome Monday to start fresh with no other items and only talk about these items, if you're good with that, Mayor.
How much, well, let me ask you this, how much longer will you intend to go?
I think we should go ahead and call it, if you can give me Monday.
I'd like to bring up something else, too. Once, once we settle this whole thing, I'd like to bring another discussion up.
If you're good with it, we'll confer tomorrow. Elections can check with you guys tomorrow to see, and we'll, we'll do the advertisement and try and schedule that time, Mayor.
It's got to work, so.
Okay, that's good with me, Mayor.
I think I gotta be in sharp accord.
We're, we're being asked by the Community Investment Group to advocate on their behalf. Obviously, we don't know the situation. If we're going to spend, if, if, if we're going, if we're being asked to sit and listen to them, I think we, I would like to have a little more information. I'd like to know whether we need to do it in closed session or not. I don't know, probably do, because I know that, you know, there's some, some, but I, but I think, I think that I want some more information, and I, and I think if I do, I suspect everybody else does. I want to know a little bit more, for example, where are we on the water? What, you know, what's, what have we, what have we been willing to do to try to meet them halfway, or at least, you know, unless we feel like we're completely in the right? And I, I just, just to let you know, I had a discussion with one of the gentlemen, well, four of the gentlemen when we left, and I said, look, you're wasting your time bringing code issues to us. We have no authority to override any code, North Carolina code, or any interpretation or interfere with any building inspector. So I said, you know, you need to fight that another way, through your engineer, your architect, however you need to do that, even, you know, even if you feel like you have to go to the State Board to get an interpretation, if you had loggerheads. But certainly, the water is something that we, that we have to help, and I'd, I'd like an update.
We'd like to do that in a closed session, because they have two lawyers on the other side. They're working on a HUD, as they indicated to you previously. We have been back and forth in reference to the word, and we've been more than happy to do that. We can add it on.
That would follow up on your client.
Yes. Captain client, pretty much. And in fact, they, their in-house lawyer, quote, slapped the hand of one of their folks for sending an email to me directly. So they're playing the game differently from their side, so be careful. There's litigation possibly involved here, but we've been more than happy to bring you up to date. We, in a closed. in a closed session, because it is attorney-client privilege material.
We'll schedule that for the next meeting, Mayor, if you're good with it.
We joined the one on Monday?
I was going to say the next council meeting.
Oh, okay.
There's no rush, Roxanne.
Monday thing works out for everybody.
Yeah, you can make it happen.
On a related note, you know, the, the public comment piece of the meeting, uh, it would probably be good for us to have, for us, the public and those watching, to have a sort of micro refresher of how that works. I know, Mr. Mayor, you did so today, um, whether you want staff to address that before you get to that part, or you address it? Something along, something along the lines of, remember to address your comments to the board, not to the audience, or not to members, whatever, just kind of a, a deal with some of that kind of crazy stuff. And then I personally, you know, like, it was killing me not to say, you know, the apples and oranges problem that was the elephant in the room, of we can legally purchase property and sell property as a city, but we cannot legally tell you, you don't have to pay your water bill and charge Tom down the street for his. Like, there's this apples and oranges problem that, you know, we can't speak to, but if they keep coming, we may have to include that in the brief. Please remember.
They're coming again.
I would prefer the staff, the staff handle those type of responses.
You know what I mean, just like, even from the count, from the dais have had bad habits of.
We're hearing the same thing every time.
Addressing people who are not at the podium and asking questions during comment periods. I mean, we've even done some stuff that's out of order. So it would not hurt for us to kind of rein us in as well, so that.
I'm going to have to put, I'm going to have to use gavel more often, is what you're saying.
There's a page of council adopted public comment rules that we can make copies of and give to all of the council.
Well, tonight, I was letting it run over.
The mayor has a copy, but I don't know that y'all have this for a while.
They pretty much abandoned. We're already sitting here at eight forty, you know, we started at five thirty, and a lot of that was on account of the public.
True, but we also spent the majority of our time on housing, too, so.
That's true.
One way, shape, or form.
All right, Mayor, we'll get to a policy tomorrow, we'll figure it out, make it happen.
All right.